This meeting is being held in person and public while recognizing that a manager may, based on the advice from a healthcare professional, have a legitimate reason for not attending the meeting in a public place in person such as COVID-19 exposure or infection, and in such circumstances may participate in the meeting remotely. So after calling the meeting to order, may we have a roll call? Mr. Smith?
Manager Crafton?
Present.
Manager Duval?
Present.
Manager Cook?
Present.
Manager Ziegler?
Present.
President Pedersen?
Present.
Managers present.
Next, we're on to the approval of the agenda. May I entertain a motion to approve the agenda?
I move.
Thank you.
Second motion to approve the agenda.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Do we have any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Manager Cook.
Well, we could talk about this at a later point, but my point is that I'd like to remove from the consent agenda, basically, the staff report, the engineer's report, regulatory report, the modification for permit 2022-018, also remove the permit 2024-003, permit 2024-020, and the resolution 24-036. So that being the case, and I guess that pretty much removes everything.
Okay, so all of the items from the consent agenda will be shifted down to new business under item A. Any other discussion? Hearing none, may we have a vote, please, Mr. Smith?
On approval of the agenda, Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
I assume that's the agenda as amended, correct?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Pedersen?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, again, I'd like to try to limit discussion to 10 minutes per manager, per item, with a two-minute rebuttal, and we're going to try very hard. We have a lot of items on the agenda this evening to adjourn by 10 if we can. Next, matters of public interest. Is there anyone here who would like to speak during our meeting this evening? Hearing or seeing no one?
This is Tom Lindquist. I would like to speak if I may.
Certainly you may, Tom, just to know, we would like you to limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Any additional comments may be submitted in writing, and generally, we don't take official action on items that are discussed at the time, but may refer the matter to staff or a future reporter direct that the matter be scheduled on a future agenda. And if you could please, again, state your name and address for the record before your comments.
Yes, my name is Tom Lindquist. I live at 16750 Baywood Terrace. That's on the east shore of Duck Lake in Eden Prairie. And I'm also a member of the Eden Prairie Duck Lake Association. And I and several other board members are pleased, first of all, that the Watershed District is proceeding with Task Order 46, I believe it is, that looks into possible modifications of the outlet to Duck Lake. And my questions or comments are mainly on the implementation schedule. Presuming that this modeling goes through successfully and the design comes forward, I and my fellow members of the association would like to know what sort of an implementation schedule would result from this. In particular, I'm a bit concerned that if I look at the current engineer's report, the Duck Lake Outlet modification is at the bottom of the page, and it shows only 10% completed in the feasibility study column. So I don't know if that's because there are many high priority projects ahead of us, but we would appreciate some insight on how that can be moved ahead as expeditiously as possible. So apart from that, we're very excited and looking forward to progress on these changes that I hope will bring the lake back to the level of capability that it had before the 2014 outlet modification took place. Thanks.
Administrator Jeffrey, would you like to comment?
President Pedersen, managers, yes. He hit the nail on the head with, there are a number of other priorities that we have that we are working on right now. As far as the implementation schedule, we would finish up the feasibility report through over the next 30 days or so, come back to the board at a likely July meeting for authorizing solicitation of bids if you want to move forward with it, and then awarding the bids the next meeting thereafter.
Thank you. Okay, I believe that we're on to the reading and approval of minutes? Yes.
President Pedersen, managers, one thing, there's going to be a lot of permitting involved in this as well as getting the railroad authority. So that's the one contingency I cannot account for. I do not know how long that will take to get that approval from the railroad authority.
Okay, thank you. I believe we discussed that a tad, so, yes. Okay, on to the reading and approval of the minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April 3 regular meeting of the Board of Managers.
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes as written for April 3, 2024.
Thank you. Manager Ziegler?
I can second.
Thank you, Manager Crafton.
I guess I should note they have my edits.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other changes to the minutes? Hearing none? Mr. Smith?
On approval of the April 3 minutes, Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Stay.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Pedersen?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero with one abstention.
Next run to approving the minutes of the April 18, 2024 workshop meeting of the Board of Managers. I'd entertain a motion. Thank you, Manager Crafton.
I'll second.
Thank you, Manager Ziegler. Any other comments or changes to the minutes from that meeting? Hearing none? Mr. Smith?
On approval of the April 18 workshop minutes, Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Stay.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Pedersen?
Yes.
Motion carries four to zero with one abstention.
Next run to committee reports. We will be first looking at the Citizens Advisory Committee, and I believe we have a representative. Marilyn, are you representing us or the CAC?
Yes, I am. Yes.
Welcome.
Thank you. So we did not have a presentation in April. One of our key discussion points was that we discussed the definition of a native plant as it's used in the, by the stewardship, the grant stewardship committee at the Watershed District, and it's defined as a plant native to the southern half of Minnesota and the northern half of Iowa. And the CAC didn't really think that we should change that definition at this point, but we hope that it will be discussed further in the EHEP process. And also, in the grant committee meetings, we can maybe have a separate discussion about that. Is it appropriate? How it relates to assisted migration? How it relates to what the actual native plant nursery landscapers are, how they're defining a native plant? So then, we talked a little bit about the opportunities for hand-on volunteer work throughout the district, such as the Friends of Eden Prairie Parks organization. Tom and I have, my husband and I have completed three of our six planned garlic mustard removal events at Riley Creek Conservation Area. And attendance is unfortunately low, but Sharon McCutter is doing her best to do the work of several people. So congratulations to Sharon. Tom, to try to get more interest, so many people walk by and use those trails. Tom created a sign that has a QR code linking to the events page of the Friends of Eden Prairie Park, so hopefully we'll get more interest. We've tried posting in the Eden Prairie Local News, because after, half our events are over and we maybe tackled half of the biggest patch of garlic mustard, leaving all the outlying areas, just, yeah, it's still a very high-quality woodland, but it's going to start suffering soon if we really don't keep, if we got to keep track, got to keep on top of removing the invasive species. Traditionally, there's not much buckthorn on the western edge of the park, but I'm seeing more and more of that, too. I'm not sure why the change. So that concludes the report.
Any questions from any of the managers? Hearing none, thank you so much, Marilyn. Shall we first receive the report of the joint meeting of the Governance Committee and the Audit and Finance Committee?
I would like to make a motion to receive the report from the Governance Committee and Audit and Finance Committee.
Second?
Thank you. Any comments, questions?
Madam President?
Yes, Manager Cook?
Well, I have a number of questions having to do with the report, and I realize that this is arguably a draft, if I'm correct?
Correct.
Okay, on that basis, you know, just as a point of procedure, I think it would be beneficial if the Governance Committee would consider part of reviewing the governance manual that we consider basically moving and receiving all of the reports, you know, at one time, in one motion. Receiving them doesn't stop comments, and that way, you know, we could, after having received the reports, you could call one by one, and if anybody had comments on a particular report, they could do it. But, you know, receiving them, I think, doesn't change that process. I just throw that out. But I do have specific questions, maybe it can't be answered now, but regarding the report, first of all, I noticed in paragraph one that, fundamentally, Julie Fleming-Wolff was consulted regarding this question about 1099 or W-2. I'm not totally familiar with Ms. Fleming-Wolff's qualifications, but I would suggest that this is as much an accounting and tax issue, and that the professionals in those two practices should be consulted. I wasn't sure what conclusion or recommendation was being made by the committee. So could somebody from that joint meeting tell me, was there a conclusion that was reached regarding this issue of, you know, reporting of payments to managers?
I believe we decided on the W-2s at the end, didn't we?
Mr. Smith, I think that's correct, but you were going to write stuff up, I think.
Yes, the conclusion of the committee was that W-2 was the correct option.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. It wasn't terribly clear to me, but thank you for that clarification. The other thing I would note, though, there was some discussion about per diems, et cetera, and it's my understanding that, you know, the federal wage and hour law applies even if the state wage and hour law doesn't apply. So I would suggest that the committees look into that, into that issue. And at the top of the second page, about, there was some, about changing language about ACH payments, first of all, I don't know a reason not to be able to process ACH payments. I assume you're allowing those or not? Wasn't exactly clear to me.
President Pedersen?
Yes.
Cook, yes, that was the point, although since we wanted to set forward a policy for how ACH payments would be processed, since they wouldn't come through in the same way that a check would, where, so they might be issued prior to a board and then released thereafter. So it was more just to set a policy of how ACH would be paid. We'd look at one singular resolution, we'd pay it by resolution or allow it by resolution, and we'd come with a list of vendors to be paid by ACH.
Well, can, may I suggest that you come up with a policy, and we include that as part of the provisions in the governance manual dealing with, you know, county and finance. Again, you know, I mentioned before, I think, you know, what are the benefits of having a governance manual? We should consolidate everything that we can about policies and procedures in the governance manual, you know, for important reason, you know, that, you know, we used to call it in the military, "next person up," you know, so if somebody can't fill their spot, there's one place to go to, you know, to get the answers, and that would be, you know, the governance manual. And we had, you know, some issues on successorship in the administrators, so I think it's, would be valuable to have all those policies, you know, in one place, and that would include these, the method for processing, you know, ACH payments, et cetera, and how to deal with them, et cetera. Let me do, and just reading my notes, you know, there was a discussion, I guess, in the third paragraph, third full paragraph, about, you know, we had the language about competitive quotations. I think that was when we were going out and getting particular bits for bonds and certificates of deposits, et cetera, but it seems to me, although that language could be retained, it doesn't, but it wouldn't apply, we, I think we should be making it clear. I don't think it applies with 4M. I mean, 4M is basically, we're using their investment model, we're choosing between their investment options, and I'm not sure that that language would only apply if we decided to look for a different, you know, investment vehicle or company to do our investments. So I would suggest that that language be looked at. See, one other item here. I wasn't sure why there was, if I read this correctly, wire transfers weren't permitted. I mean, wire transfers technically are just a means of transferring money using the Fed system, and I think it either is or is closely related to ACH, so I'm not sure why we wouldn't allow money transfers to our accounts. I think it's worth looking into what really is a wire transfer and what's allowed, and what is the processes by the Federal Reserve, which, you know, governs all of these. Those are my comments. I look forward to getting a revised version of the governance manual and the policies, and I'll just, I'll bring this up now. I mean, this was at least one audit, if not two audits previous, about the fact that, if I'm correct, this was looked at, we don't have or we have not adopted financial policies. There were a lot of recitations about supposedly, these were our policies, recitations in the audit, but when I asked, there was never any evidence produced that we actually adopted any of those policies with respect to our financial accounting. So again, I think it would be good idea for the Audit and Finance Committee and the Governance Committee to look into those policies and making sure that we ultimately approve them. And as I said, I recommend they be in the governance manual. And that's it for my comments. I yield back, thank you.
Thank you. I think, could we possibly ask Manager Ziegler and Manager Duval to revise the adoption of just the one report to both of them? We have a resolution here for accepting the CAC report and for the Governance and Audit Committee.
I'm fine with that.
That would be okay?
I'm fine.
Thank you. And I believe that that would be Resolution 24-033, from what I'm seeing. Okay, if that's the case, then I think we can proceed with the roll call.
Resolution 2433, Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duval?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Pedersen?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Looks like we need a board representative for the May 20 CAC meeting. We have a volunteer.
A volunteer.
Thank you. Manager Duval volunteers? Okay, we don't have any items on the consent agenda, as all of them have been pulled, which brings us to new business, the first item, which is to receive the April staff report. You pulled this, Manager Cook?
I did. Please bear with me as I bring this up. Make sure I'm looking at the right one here. Apologize, hang on just one moment. I think, first of all, I put at the top of my notes here, were there, the question I had, were there, did we approve permits? There was work done on Lake Lucy Road in at least three locations, two of which basically were work in the wetlands. Did we approve permits for that work?
President Pedersen, managers, there are two pond dredging projects that the city of Chanhasan is permitted for. The third, I don't know what the third one you would, or suggesting would be, but there are two pond permit dredging projects.
Well, these are all, these three were on the south side of Lake Lucy Road, and appeared to be some type of piping that went all the way down the slopes with, ended up having some kind of a manhole or opening down in the wetland. And I think, and if you drive along there, you can see where they had put straw down or whatever it is. So I believe there's three of them. Two of them, I believe, are west of Galpin, and then one is east of Galpin, almost to Powers Boulevard. And then the other item is, is that they're working on Galpin, and did we approve the permit for that? Because they're doing quite extensive work there, not just a mill and overlay.
President Pedersen, manager, could you repeat that very last part? Where is?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, so I'm sorry. Galpin and Lake Lucy Road, and actually, you know, it's south, well, they're doing north of Lake Lucy Road and south of Lake Lucy Road on Galpin.
Yep. So, President Pedersen, Manager Cook, so north of Lake Lucy Road, that's Minnea Creek Watershed District, so that would fall in, under their jurisdiction. Anything south of that intersection would be part of the overall project. So if I would have to look and see how far south of the center line they've gotten, it is possible that it would be de minimis on ours, but we'll go take a look, because, yeah, they should not be working south of Lake Lucy Road yet.
Okay, well, it's pretty extensive, so I ask you to go take a look at it. Not that I'm opposed to it, but I'm not sure, you know, they're going to be abiding by all our requirements, and hopefully they will. So that's why I bring it up on that basis. And then, my other question that I have, they're doing utility work on 78th West of Powers, and did we grant a permit on that?
78th West?
They're burying, it looks like they're burying new pipe. I don't know whether it's gas pipe or some other piping.
President Pedersen, Manager Cook, yes, CenterPoint Energy has a permit to be working through much of the city of Chanhasan. They're installing a new high-pressure gas pipeline through directional drilling. And with directional drilling, they always have to excavate the entry point to it, so that's where the disturbance comes in, and the exit point.
Okay, so we would have granted a permit then for them to do that?
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay, thank you for that. I'm sorry.
Yep, President Pedersen, Manager Cook, that would fall under the administrative, because the only, it would have only triggered erosion control and we'll see.
Okay, very good. Now, I noticed at the bottom of page one, there is a reference to the Spring Road properties, and I wonder if somebody could summarize the status of that. My recollection of last week or last month's meeting was kind of a cursory statement, so somebody give me the status of the, of that project, and I previously asked for documents, and I don't believe I've received all of them. I've received some smattering of documents. So what is the current status of that?
President Pedersen, Manager Cook, we have entered into contract for deed with the Standell. The item that is on here is I'm working with the League of Minnesota City Insurance Trust to insure those properties. I wonder if Mr. Smith has anything he would like to add about the status, or I don't know that there's much more.
No, I do believe you should have received a number of emails from me on Friday last week that I think completed the data request.
Well, I did receive a number of emails, and I'll be honest, I haven't reviewed all of them, you know, in detail. I will, it just struck me, I wasn't sure that I'd received all of the documents that I would have expected, but I'll review those and get back to them. Here's the really, the most important thing on page two, are we going to do anything for Staff Bakum in recognition of her outstanding, you know, performance of her duties in her position?
But, President Pedersen, managers, we have been working as a staff on a way to recognize Ms. Bakum and the work she has done. Yes, cat's out of the bag now, she is going to move on to her grown-up job. She joined us, what, 2020 as a Green Corps member, and then stayed on with us and worked way up. She was invaluable in February of 2021, when we were in a bit of turmoil. I'm not sure we would have made it through without her, so I'm happy for her, definitely mixed emotions. It's going to make a lot more work for me, but I'm really happy for her moving on. So yes, we are, as a staff, looking at what we can do to recognize Ms. Bakum.
Well, I, you know, well, that's good. I mean, I think, you know, getting together or something with, you know, with staff and the managers would be a nice idea, but I leave anything further, obviously, to you to come up with some recommendations on that basis. But I'd like to personally, since I don't think I'll be at another meeting before Bakum leaves, except for maybe a workshop, I'd like to thank her particularly for her outstanding service to this district. Her amazing work on especially administrative items, I think, is phenomenal. I particularly wish her much success in her new career as a lawyer, and I know that she will be very successful. And it's a rewarding career, I think, despite maybe ups and downs. So again, thank you and congratulations, Staff Bakum.
My question is if you're going to go with Esquire or JD?
I I believe all of us, all of us concur with you, Manager Cook, in terms of your feelings about Ms. Bakum. We will miss her.
Yes, definitely. If I may, I just have a couple more items. I don't want to, want to drag this, this part out. But the one question I had is there's a reference to a metro city, or excuse me, Twin Cities Metro Watership Regulators Group. I don't believe I've seen that before. Can you just, you know, 10 seconds, tell me what that is and who belongs and?
President Peterson, Managers, it started out, it's, it's primarily the metropolitan watersheds, although they do provide virtual link for outstate to come in. And it really is, is a way for the different watersheds to talk about solutions or issues they've had with compliance with permits, with what level of threshold for permits, what new rules they're implementing, issues they've had. So it's really a way for, to just share ideas amongst the various watershed districts.
And I assume that we've shared information. One thing I'd say, I would appreciate seeing whatever, you know, information, ideas other watersheds have. I always think it's many heads, you know, make for a better product. So that's, that's my view. Let me see if I have anything else. Oh, so the one, there was one item, page eight, if we go to, I think it's the, you know, the second grade area talks about discussions with Eden Prairie about, I guess, the district taking on some rules regarding operations and maintenance of BMPs. And I, I know this will be coming back and I'm glad to see you'll be, if this is considered, it'll be part of the, the budget. But I am a little concerned about cities, not just Eden Prairie, but you know, Chan, Hasan, and all the other cities, about laying off their costs and expenses to us, especially regarding BMPs that we may have ended up paying for. And I, it, it, you know, we could certainly do that, but I think we have to make sure that it's just not a one-off or Eden Prairie or any other city. So I, that's just my preliminary comment as you go through and, and consider, you know, discussing that. That's. I noticed you did, you had treatment for, it was the curly pond leaf, right?
Correct.
And that's all been completed then for this year?
President Peterson, Manager Cook, yes. All the, all of the treatments have been completed for this year. Staff Maxwell is jumping on to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it has all been done for this year.
Yep. All the curly pond re-treatments haven't done. We do have Duck Lake, which is depending delineation, might get a Eurasian water mill foil treatment.
Okay. Last item, page 11, last, last item. I was, I didn't understand, there was a reference to regional credit. And I was wondering what that had to do with the Lotus Lake watershed water quality item?
President Peterson, Managers, so we have been in conversations with the city of Chan, Hasan. They know they have various road projects coming up. We've looked at North Lotus Lake Park primarily as a way to put in a stormwater park of sites, have the city share costs with us on that and those be available as a regional treatment, consistent commensurate with their input of finances.
Okay. So they, they somehow then get credits or we get credits based upon how they use it or who they, who uses it? I'm, I'm just a little fuzzy on that, if you can.
Correct. It would be, it would be more of a pro-rated system. So for instance, if they paid 50% of the costs, 50% of the credits they could use to apply towards a road project or other projects they have in that area.
Oh, I see. So this is a way of offsetting basically other projects or the, the consequences of other projects. Is that right? Okay. Very good. Thank you. I'm finished. I yield back. Thank you very much.
Do you want to hear a motion to accept the staff report for April?
So.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Andrew Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duvall?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries to five to zero.
We're on the April Engineers Report. Manager Cook, you pulled this?
Yes. One minute, please, Madam Chair. I just need to bring up that. So if, go to your page five, Mr. Soviak, and Task Order 37, it just, it says sediment analysis and it refers to Lake Susan. Is this part of that project where we're trying to determine, I guess, lack of better word, pollutants coming from the surrounding wetlands into, into Lake Susan?
President Peterson, Manager Cook, that is correct.
Yeah. And then I see we're looking at Lotus Lake. This is really odd, but if you go to page six of six, apologize, Task Order 44, IMA talks about a handrail on the reused pond. Were we required to install some handrail for a code violation or something?
President Peterson, Manager Cook, with the new structure that's getting put in place, there will be a vertical drop off the water side. So we are required to put a handrail in for safety purposes.
I get it. I understand. I get that. And when will we see, when will we see something on Task Order 45 regarding the groundwater monitoring process?
President Peterson, Manager Cook, earlier this week, Administrator Jeffrey Evan Christensen, our groundwater expert, met to go over that. We are looking at developing a layout and a plan in the next month or so to bring back.
Okay. Well, I, you know, as part of that, it just, again, I'm concerned that this is kind of like a solution looking for a problem. So I hope that, you know, whatever you, documentation you develop, that you'll be addressing my, my concern on that. And then last item, Task Order 46, Item B. I'm a little, I, my understanding is, is that part of a natural resources basically has a level and it's, and I, is it the 1969 level or is it that later one that there weren't saying that we have to meet for Duck Lake?
President Peterson, Manager Cook, so the, the DNR is requiring that the outlet elevation, the, the invert of the pipe remain the same. What this analysis is looking at is we're looking at changing the configuration of the outlet, not that bottom elevation, but the configuration to allow water to mimic what happened between 1969 and 2014, before the outlet was revised by the city.
Well, I'm, I'm a little concerned with, to me, this strikes me as a method, and I'll use the word scheme to evade the requirements, you know, and the purposes of the permit and the elevation. So I'm very concerned about, you know, taking that approach. I don't believe it should be our approach to, to skirt, you know, requirements of whether it be a law or a regulation. Again, I said this before, either abide by it or we get, you know, we get the rule changed. So I just want you all to know that I'm very concerned about trying to come up with a scheme to change something that really hasn't been changed or authorized. So with that, I believe that are all my, oh, one last thing. On the, on your table at the end, which again is fantastic table, the one thing that did jump out at me were two things, actually one thing, Rice Marsh Lake, you know, it says first of three alum doses. Is there a reason why we are considering three alum doses there as opposed to, for example, two on, I think it was two on Riley and two on Lotus?
President Peterson, Manager Cook, the reason for the three doses is partially to do with adjustments to pH. We didn't, if we were to dose it in two, there's a chance that the pH would, would be affected. So that's why it's split into three. In addition, the first treatment has been highly effective. So through continued monitoring, we're able to keep, I'll say pushing off the next alum dose because the first dose has been so effective.
Well, that was, that was exactly, you led right into the second question that I had is, is that, you know, will these even be necessary based upon what the apparent success of that, that first dosage? So right now, we're taking a wait and see approach to the subsequent doses.
That's correct.
There was that's it. I yield back. Thank you very much.
And I did entertain a motion to receive the April Engineers Report.
I'd like to make a motion to receive the April Engineers Report.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Andrew Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duvall?
Yes.
Andrew Cook?
Yes.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Next item is to receive the April Regulatory Report. Manager Cook, you pulled this?
Yes, I did. And jump right to page three. We've got, you know, each one of these items have been going on for quite some time and other guests, the last one, not quite as long as the other ones. But I think we need to develop a procedure or, and have one in our rules if we don't have one. And if we have one, we need to follow a procedure for moving these along and getting resolution. You know, I don't think it's in our interest to have, you know, permit violations outstanding for over a year now, at least in two, or almost, for over a year in one and almost a year in the second one. And, you know, in my view, even two months or a month and a half on the third one with no responses is unacceptable. And so I'd like to see, you know, staff and council come back with, you know, process and procedure to deal with these. Otherwise, you know, my concern is we're going to run up to, against, you know, arbitrary and capricious, you know, failures to enforce, et cetera, all those, all those legal arguments that may or may not be successful, but which will just waste time and cost money. So I would, as I said, request that, you know, staff and legal, either we have it, we, in our rules, we need to follow it. If we don't have it, we need to come up with it. And while I'm on the topic of rules, you know, it seems like the issue of rules has dropped off the radar. And we've had a number of discussions of changes that we should at least consider with respect to our rules. I don't have them in front of me, but there've been several of them. And I think we need to get that back on the agenda and discuss them. And I think it's particularly important because having to deal with, I'm sure we're going to be dealing with, you know, wake boat activities. And now there's at least three studies out regarding those. And I think that there is room and a basis for us being involved and regulating the impact of those activities. So again, I'd like to get the rules back on the, you know, back on our agendas. So with that, I am finished. And I yield back. Thank you.
I'd entertain a motion to receive the April Regulatory Report.
I move.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Manager Cook, or Mr. Smith?
Andrew Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duvall?
Yes.
Andrew Cook?
Yes.
Andrew Ziegler?
Yes.
President Peterson?
Yes.
Carries five to zero.
Next is the Approval of Modification for Permit 2022-018 for Eden Prairie High School Track Facility Improvements. You pulled this, Manager Cook?
I, I did. And for a couple of reasons and, you know, and maybe those seem to be nothing. But, you know, it finally struck me after all these years that I've been participating in this process. The question is, do we come up with a resolution number for these resolutions for adopting the permits? I don't know. And so I have that one question I have. Do we include those in our formal list of resolutions?
President Peterson, Managers, no, they are not included in our ledger of boats formal list of resolutions. The resolution number is the permit number itself. We do have a record of that though, just in a separate listing.
Well, I, I, okay, thank you. Again, I might suggest that, you know, the, the Governance Committee consider looking at that as, looking at that process, it would be, I think, good to have those resolutions integrated with the general list of resolutions based upon, I guess, when they're ultimately approved. But that was the concern I had. And then a second question I had about the, the resolution that says resolved that the application for a modification to approval of permit 2022-018. And I just, so the question is, is we haven't issued the permit yet in this case, or have we?
Engineer Soviak. President Peterson, Manager Cook, the, the permit has been issued.
So I would suggest that that paragraph be changed to say, application for a modification to or of permit so-and-so and not the approval of. So in other words, I would, a simple thing is just strike approval of and just for a modification to permit 2022-018. And that, and that's it.
So again. Make a motion to approve modification of permit 2022-018, Eden Prairie High School Track Facility.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Manager Duval. And a roll call, please.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Manager Cook?
I'd like to move a friendly amendment, basically to adopt the proposed board action set forth in the Engineers Report with the changes proposed by Manager Ziegler. And I do that to capture both of the resolutions, the proposed resolutions.
Accept that.
All right. How about you? Yes. Okay. Mr. Smith?
Andrew Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duvall?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Next, we're on the Permit 2024-003 for the Asian Market Parking Expansion. Manager Cook, what questions did you have for this?
This permit raised the general, the, the general issue that I have is what are we doing? What can we do with regard to salt? And is there any way that we can, if not with respect to these applications, future applications that probably involve maybe changing our rules, to require at least some consideration of methodologies to minimize the salt that's going to end up going down the drain and into our watersheds? I mean, we have, you know, I mean, we have, you know, we have the, you have to come up with the, what do you call it? The procedure or whatever is or the salt plan. But as I understand them, they mostly have to do with how much you apply and where, you know? And, you know, you get training, you know, you apply some, but, you know, we, I keep seeing more and more of these permits are involving underground, you know, facilities. And I'm just wondering, is there, is there something that we can do? Is there some technology or whatever it is that we can at least have applicants consider to, you know, try to minimize the amount of the salt that goes down the drain? And, and I know this is going to be basically from what, you know, October to April? I don't know if any of that makes any sense. I don't know, Mr. Sobeck seen anything out there in the literature, et cetera, but the reason I, I pulled this is basically to make, you know, make that point is, is there something we can do to, you know, to control the salt, especially when we have these underground confinements and tanks and, and, and stuff like that where you've got it captured? Is it possible that we can capture it, filter it, all kinds of filtration systems, neutralize it, et cetera? So I don't know if you have an answer, Mr. Sobeck, or but that, that's my question. Is there something that we could do or require?
President Patterson, Manager Cook. There isn't a whole lot out there. The one thing we have seen would be utilization of hot water being piped underneath the, the surface for melting of the, of the ice. And obviously there are design considerations that can be made as, as the managers have all talked about before, you know, snow placement, slope of the driveway drainage, you know, placement of the building, utilizing south orientation where possible. But yeah, as of right now, other winter treatments for snow and ice tends to be either physical removal, salt or hot water piped underneath.
Madam Chair, if I could, just a brief comment.
Yes, Manager Cook.
Well, I would, you know, again, as part of the rules are, you know, to look into, is there something that we can do? I mean, you mentioned, you know, heat, I mean, geothermal heat, you know, is out there. It's, the heat itself is free. It's just the piping to get at it is, which isn't free, you know, Iceland uses it, but then again, they've got an abundance of, you know, hot water, basically almost at the surface. But it just, it just seems to be limiting the amount of salt. Maybe we can do more, you know, for our creeks and streams, especially with these holding, the more of these facilities, we're going to end up with, you know, holding ponds, et cetera. I mean, I know there's reverse osmosis. There's, you know, I know that's a filtration system. It works. I happen to have represented for twenty seven years and the leader in reverse osmosis, which is now owned by GE. So I just asked that, do we consider that when we looking at these projects and if there's something we can talk to developers, et cetera, about being able to do this, this type of, you know, treatment, et cetera? And then to your point, Minister Jeffrey, I mean, look and being suggesting, you know, south facing parking lots, et cetera, slopes, whatever, whatever we can do to make suggestions, how perhaps the design could be changed or improved so as to, you know, minimize the use of salt, if not also to capture it. So I, I yield back.
President Patterson.
Yes.
I have a comment on this one. With respect to our current rules, I don't think there's anything that says anything about the percentage of hard surfaces. But I noticed this permit takes it to about ninety percent hard surfaces on the site. And I think that's, it's crazy that we allow that. So we need to think, but when we're changing our rules, you know, fifty percent would seem like that could be the limit. This ninety percent, I mean, you could buy seven acres of land and cover it with buildings and asphalt. So you get no natural
filtration.
Infiltration and no natural cooling effect from vegetation and trees and no natural sequestration of carbon in the trees. I mean, you, you lose a lot. It's, it's all about the water. I understand, but there's, there's other things in the environment that we're not getting benefit out of in these underground systems.
President Patterson. Managers, yeah, I mean, that's the age old issue and Mr. Smith can speak to it probably better than I can. Then we start to get into the whole land use and we start to get out of our bailiwick. I would love it if every site was ten percent because we know that that's that threshold. So it's, you know, we, we've been trying to come up with ways to incentivize less coverage on sites. And that's one of the things that's come out of the app is, you know, how can we work with municipalities to look at their design standards and safety standards to do that? But unfortunately, right now, we're, we are at the back end of it. If a city approves a plat and that plat is ninety percent coverage, then we're relegated to saying you need to meet the standard in that. And then what you see often results in, yeah, but we can't meet that. Can we have variance from that standard? So, yeah, I don't disagree.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Sobeck, if, if you could have somebody take a look at that, it just seems like, you know, it affects the water. Right? Well, isn't it? Anyway, I'll make a motion to approve permit twenty twenty-four dash zero zero three.
I need a second.
A second.
Thank you. You had a comment, Manager Cook?
I, I, I did. I absolutely agree with Manager Ziegler's sentiment about, you know, being able to cover all this territory. And it seems to me, and then this is where I think we need obviously legal counsel to bear in mind. And again, this comes down to our rules. What can we do in our rules to minimize these possibilities? For example, you know, what strikes me is, is, you know, at a minimum, it would seem to me, we would want to absolutely consider having these, what do you call them? Tree drains or tree lines? What do you call those? They're, you know what I'm talking about?
Yep, tree trenches.
Tree trenches.
You know, at a minimum, you know, being requiring those because it's a recharge issue. And also, you know, if there's trees in them, you know, there's a shade and there's a climate change, you know, impact on that. And, and the last comment I have is, is, you know, I mean, by no means, you know, the expert or the guru on this, but it seems to me we have some ability in our ability to approve, you know, water management plans for these cities to impose some requirements within reason. And I think we should be looking at doing that as part of our rules revisions. That's why I keep coming back to the rules. I think we really need to look at it. We need to do something much sooner rather than later, because I think there's going to be a whole lot of these, you know, changes to existing properties, redevelopments, where we'll have an opportunity to really make an impact on saving our waters. So I, I agree with the Manager Ziegler wholeheartedly. We should be doing something more at a minimum.
Mr. Smith, we have a motion and a second. May we have a vote, please?
Andrew Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duval.
Yes.
Andrew Cook.
Yes.
Manager Ziegler.
Yes.
President Patterson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
We're now to permit twenty twenty-four dash zero two zero for Olympic Hills Golf Course. Manager Cook, you had some comments?
I did. Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, out of my list, is there a time when a pond becomes a wetland and entitled to some protections? Or can it never be a wetland?
President Patterson, Managers, a constructed stormwater facility that's in an upland area that was constructed for the sole purpose of stormwater management would not be considered a jurisdictional wetland under plac. Now, if they excavated that area for the sole purpose of wildlife management or something of that nature, then in that case, it could be considered a wetland. But stormwater management facilities are exempt from jurisdiction.
Well, that, that certainly is unfortunate. Thank you for that. My, my second question was, it seemed to me that the financial assurance was quite low given the fact of the work that they appear to be doing, which I guess is turning a, I don't know what it was, par four, par five into a par three. And so I'm wondering if that, that was, I think it's worth asking the question, was that pond there solely for stormwater management? Was it always there? Was it a, well, you know, a wetland? When is it date back? So that's one question I think we should at least ask before allowing them to basically, you know, move it, you know, in that regard. And so that's, that's my comment, you know, on that, on that issue.
Engineer Sobeck.
Patterson, Manager Cook. With respect to the condition in which that pond was originally constructed, they provided aerial photo evidence that it was constructed in upland areas. So it was constructed for the purposes of aesthetics and stormwater management for the golf course when it was originally built.
Okay, thank you.
So I am looking for a motion and a second to approve this permit.
I'd like to make a motion to approve permit twenty twenty-four dash zero two zero with the inclusion of the recommendations by the Engineers Report.
A second. Thank you. I think we're ready for the vote.
Andrew Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duval.
Yes.
Andrew Cook.
Yes.
Manager Ziegler.
Yes.
President Patterson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
We're on to the last item of the prior consent agenda, which is to adopt Resolution twenty-four dash zero three six to enter into a cost share agreement with the Walnut Grove Homeowners Association. You pulled this manager cook?
I did. So I have two, two issues or two questions. To me, it was unclear under the terms of the contract, how long the grantee was going to have to perform maintenance. The application was one thing, but it's unclear. So I recommend that if this is approved, that this provision be looked at and we specify that, you know, that property has to be maintained, you know, for, well, indefinitely, I would say, we're going to put our money into it. So that's item number one. And then item number two is, has, that was on the top of page three, also on page three. There's the second paragraph of section seven. And I would, you know, suggest that a legal counsel, look at this, I think in the, my view is, is that when we're dealing with paying another entity money, that basically I think the owner should be indemnifying us for everything arising out of this project that we're paying money for, other than something that is solely attributable to our negligence or I would say even our, you know, willful misconduct. I think that, that's, you know, that would be my recommendation. This way, there's some muddy grounds about if the owner did something, there was suit, we wouldn't have coverage. And I think we should be making it clear, whatever happens, the owner's on the hook, except for if, you know, the liability is solely attributable to some negligent or willful act on our part. And then I, I apologize, I misstated. I said there was two. Actually, there's three. I brought this up before. The initial paragraph in section eight on remedies, the, the second sentence I'd mentioned, I think that could be better worded to be clear as to the fact that, you know, we're not waiving, the district is not waiving any of its immunities in tort. That language is a little arcane, I think, to, to, to say the least. So unless anybody, does anybody else have any comments on that?
Hearing none.
Well, Madam Chair, I would move the adoption of Resolution twenty-four dash oh three sixes provided to us on the condition that we have legal counsel to review and section five, section seven, and section eight in light of my comments and that they finalize the agreement with the assistance of staff.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Any other comments, other managers?
The applicants are present tonight. I don't know if they wanted to speak to it or not, but two representatives from Walnut Grove Association.
Second issue. We are, we have a big interest in this stormwater retention pond. That is to say, according to the legal requirements by the City of Chanhasan, we technically own it, but the city has an easement against it. So when you speak about who is responsible, the owners, well, we are the owner technically of the south half of the pond. The north half of the pond is owned by individual homeowners on Walnut Curve, on the south side of Walnut Curve, which is a street immediately to the north of the north side of the pond. And with the city's easement, I don't know what the legal implications are, but it's not like, you know, we own it. If we make a mistake, we're responsible. If the city makes a mistake, are we responsible or is the city? I mean, legally, it sounds like it could be questionable if that is an issue that the district wants to consider.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
So one question, Mr. Smith, is the review, that doesn't seem like that would be that, I mean, it's a standard reviewing the cost share.
Sections five, seven, eight.
Yeah, right. We're happy to do that.
Okay. Sounds good. No other comments? Ready for the vote?
And, uh, Manager Crafton?
Oh, no, based on the amendment, all the conditions to the motion.
Manager Duval.
No.
Manager Cook.
Yes.
Manager Ziegler.
Although, yes.
President Patterson.
I'll vote yes.
Motion carries three to two.
All right, we're on to the March Treasurer's Report.
Okay. Like to ask for approval or acceptance of the Treasurer's Report. It's been done, reviewed in compliance with our internal policy and rules and practices. So as submitted.
I'll second. Any questions about the March Treasurer's Report?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Manager Cook.
Um, so I probably by asking this question, I, maybe it looks like I was asleep at the switch, perhaps I was, but when was the format of the, of the report changed? We used to have a different format of the cover letter. In addition, we used to have more detail schedules. And I noticed that we do not have the detailed schedules that we had, I think, even as of last month. I think even as of last month. And certainly, we don't have the cover letter that was traditionally provided. So that's my first question.
I was out. I didn't catch any of that, so.
I think Amy might be able to respond to this.
Format.
Four months ago? I think it's four months?
At least four months ago. It was more than that, probably about a half a year ago now.
Yeah.
It was changed. Part of it was changed so that we could have a letter that, to put it bluntly, the letter before said, yeah, we're not standing behind this. So that was the reason for the changes.
Well.
Chair, so it's a compilation, it's not an audited report, so it's not. That's why they don't, I mean, that's why they're not necessarily standing behind, but it's not unusual. I mean, those are, that's normal. So, but we did have the language changed because they thought it was confusing to some of the managers. And so that was the impetus for that.
Well, Madam Chair, I'll continue then unless somebody else has comment on that question.
Go ahead, Manager Cook.
Okay, well, first of all, I think that's just another reason why we need to get rid of Red Path and Company, as well as our auditors. I'm not convinced that either one of those parties knows what they're doing. And I'm shocked that something like this got through their compliance officers, which means they either didn't send it to them, or the compliance officer, I believe is lacking in their due diligence of what goes out of their office. But I'll, so I have a couple of follow-up questions. And I didn't ask this before, but on the balance sheet, we have under, you know, capital, which is basically the, the numbers to make the liabilities and capital equal to the current assets. We have fund balance general and fund balance default. And can somebody explain to me the difference between the two?
Who'd like to take that question?
Okay.
President Pedersen, managers.
Yes.
The fund balance general is, with, I believe, and I can verify this with, with Red Path, is with the presumed interest from our investments. And I think the fund balance default, I don't know what that would be then, if that's just they deducted all of the revenue that we would have made. So I will, I will follow up with Red Path and find out the difference. Because, yeah, I don't remember that being, this is a line item I don't recall being in previous. Do you?
What?
Fund balance.
General and default thing?
They changed the terminology on them. Essentially, your liabilities and your capital are going to equal your, your assets. So it's, you've got the liabilities that are there. And then you've got, so you've got assets equal liabilities plus equity. The net income, the net income gets rolled into that, that these two other funds represent all the rest that equals up to the, to the asset, so.
Madam Chair.
Are you done, Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Okay, Manager Cook, yes?
Well, obviously, nobody knows the answers to those. So I'm asking that we get the answers to it. And besides that, we should be getting a report at least quarterly. And I note that the first quarter is past by at least a month. We should be getting a quarterly report of exactly what the fund balance general and the fund balance default consist of, what their investments are and what their performance was. So I'm asking that we get those from, is it a 4M? They should be able to readily apply that. And this also goes back to, you know, our auditing, accounting, financing policies and procedures. I would expect that the, hopefully, the policies and procedures that are going to be proposed to us will include a description of how or the balance sheet is, has been arrived at. There has been, and the, and the reason I raise the question about the, the introduction letter is that the old one used to tell us about how they went about and how the, the balance sheet, et cetera, was put together, what was consistent. At that time, there was an issue or the question about income was only booked when it was received, but liabilities were booked when we knew that there was a liability. So we had a cash and accrual combo or hybrid. I don't know what we have now, but whatever we, is going to be, something should be recommended and should be incorporated into the, our financial policies and procedures. So somebody can look at this and actually know what kind of accounting system that we're actually, actually using. And I have a follow-up question here, so I can understand this. If you go down to expenses on that next page, the very first line item is Judy Tower, if I'm pronouncing your name correctly. I don't quite understand what the note is. It says issued 48. And all the rest of them are 58. And if this was issued 48, why is it tracking on this statement?
President Pedersen, managers. This was an applicant who had requested that their escrow be released a month prior, and it did not make it through Red Path. So I used my discretion of the $5,000 limit to release that portion of her financial assurance, so that the rest could be on a subsequent meeting.
Well, I,
What about that just?
I don't think that, that, you know, your authority should involve that. And nothing against you, but I think this is a question again. You know, we have our procedures down, we follow our procedures. And I'm sorry, you know, if, you know, request doesn't get through, it doesn't get, you know, get through. You know, so again, I think that's something that should be addressed by the Audit and Finance Committee and should be set forth specifically in our policies and procedures. And the next item I'm trying to understand is down toward the bottom. In red, it has electronic payments. And are these, again, I don't understand, are these payments that were authorized in April or just made in, made in April and now being authorized? So if somebody can answer that question?
So.
Manager Crafton?
President Pedersen, yeah, these are electronic fund transfers. So these are done, you know, like for the benefits and all those like state withdrawals, things like that, and the wages. So they're set up in the system to just, to go through. But, so we were just trying to identify those to show people exactly what, what falls into that category. The other thing that Cook brought up in terms of the, the fund balance default and in general, I've looked at those in the past in the detail. That, that's a question for the accountant. I wouldn't go to 4M for that. She would be posting that to these particular accounts. So that's not a 4M thing, that's, that's the accounting piece.
Thank you, Manager Crafton. Any other questions, Manager Cook?
Madam Chair, yeah, well, well, thank you. But now staying with Manager Crafton stated, totally doesn't make sense and we don't have a policy or procedure to deal with these. And the question was, were they approved last time and then paid? You know, we can't, you know, in my view, we can't be paying items that haven't been previously approved. And if this needs to be part of the policies and procedures, then it needs to be set forth in the policies and procedures. The existing or the old process was everything had to do, be done by check. Now, we're, I'm not opposed to doing electronic payments, but then we need to be clear about that. And our governance manual needs to be changed because I believe it specifically talks about checks being drafted and provided to the treasurer and reviewed and then approved, you know, for payment. So whatever we decide we want to do, we should make sure that our documentation with that is, is consistent. And my final item is, is unfortunate, I was tied up, but I had asked for the detailed internal financials. But I only asked for them today, but I would like to get those on a regular basis, please, because it's important for me to find out where our money is being spent and what account is. And so with that, I will yield back.
President Pedersen?
Yes, Manager Crafton.
These things are all things that are in the budget. It's not like we haven't already accounted for them ahead of time. We know what we're going to be spending. And yes, we do vote to pay the bills every month, but these are part of the budgeting process and we've already approved that those months.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have to respond, please, one for 30 seconds.
Manager Cook.
Manager Crafton is not answering the specific questions. It makes no difference that something's in a budget. You have to account for it properly in accordance to whatever procedure we've adopted. This is the second time we've gotten an answer that doesn't address the question that I've asked. I yield back.
So I believe we have a motion and a second to accept the March Treasurer's Report. May we have a vote, Mr. Smith?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duvel?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
No.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Pedersen?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
I'm looking for an adoption for resolution 24-035 to approve paying of the bills.
That we pay the bills in that resolution 24-035.
Thank you, Manager Crafton. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions? Hearing none. Mr. Smith?
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duvel?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
I have a clarification. What bills are we approving for payment?
24-035, whatever is that resolution? I believe that is the payment schedule, if I remember correctly. Yes.
Well, I vote no.
Manager Ziegler? I vote yes. President Pedersen?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one.
All right, we're on to permit 2023-077, Enclave at Manor Road variance request for Rule J. I will turn this over to Mr. Jeffrey or Engineer Soviak.
Engineer Soviak.
President Pedersen, managers, I've got a little PowerPoint slide here that I'll go through to walk through the permit itself, what they're proposing, and then we'll walk through the variants. And at any point to give questions, please let me know. So this is a roughly six and a half acre site, site in the Duck Lake watershed, just north of Duck Lake. This site is currently a single-family residential area, and they are looking at creating a 17-lot, single-family home subdivision. By removing that existing house, putting in 17 lots for stormwater management. What we've got up here is we've got a wet pond, essentially, a four bay, a biofiltration basin with the little orange triangle in that area. The arrows represent areas that will be vegetated. There'll be swales for stormwater treatment. And the large area in green is area that's going to be preserved and restored in a natural vegetation and left that way. The applicant is also looking at replacing and upsizing an existing storm sewer pipe in the eastern boulevard of 168th Avenue West as part of this development. This increasing of the pipe size will come into play when we get more into the variants as well. For the site I mentioned, it's six and a half acres. Existing imperviousness is about a half an acre. We're looking at increasing the imperviousness to close to two acres of impervious area. And the, like I mentioned before, the entire area won't be disturbed. They are looking at preserving this area to go on green. So if we look at an overall compliance summary, the application is basically in compliance with the erosion control. We've got a comment in here that we would need the information of who's responsible for erosion control installation and maintenance during construction. Typical condition that you recommend for stormwater management. If we look at rate control, it is not in compliance. And the applicant has asked for variance from rate control. For volume or abstraction, it is in compliance, providing abstraction to the maximum extent practicable. From a water quality perspective, the application is meeting requirements to remove the required amounts of phosphorus and suspended solids. Low floor criteria is in compliance. We are asking for some additional information to confirm on several of the low floors. Maintenance, we've got a condition that we're recommending there for maintenance declaration that would get recorded on the property. Chloride management, that is in compliance. The street that is proposed with the development would become a city street. And City Cruze and the city of Eden Prairie have submitted a chloride management plan. And from a wetland protection perspective, it is in compliance because it doesn't discharge the wetlands. You get the permit fees, and then we also have the financial assurance. Any questions about the development as a whole before I get into the variants discussion?
So, Madam President, I have one question. So you say it's in the Duck Lake sub watershed? Is it always in the Duck Lake watershed or is it on the edge? So part of it is in the Duck Lake watershed?
Federsen, Manager Ziegler, it is there, it is on the edge. The majority of the area is tributary to Purgatory Creek. A small portion of the southern part is in the Duck Lake watershed.
Thank you.
So just to recap, they're going from a half an acre impervious to two acres impervious. They're taking a single-family home and putting 17 lots on it.
That's correct.
Thank you. Let's hear more about the variants.
So variants provisions are covered underneath, in the regulatory program underneath Rule K. There are various criteria that applicants are required to supply information to show how they meet these different criteria. And I'll step through these criteria one by one, so we don't have to read them up here on the screen. But first, we'll talk about what is the variance and then how did this variance come about? So they're asking for a variance from rate control to allow increased discharge into an existing storm sewer system in the northwest corner of the site. So if we look on the right-hand portion of the screen, this is the existing drainage divides for the site. The red lines represent drainage divides. The orange arrows show the general flow direction, how the water would flow across the property. Under existing conditions, you can see the majority of the flow sheet flows to the north into the backyards of existing homes. We go over to the right side and we look at the blue outlines. Those are the proposed sub watershed divides. Again, the arrows show how the water's going to traverse the site and then discharge off the site. We can see we're still going to have some sheet flow coming off to the north, primarily from this natural area that's going to be preserved. The rest of the site, with the exception of the few small areas on the fringes, will be collected on-site and routed to the stormwater BMP. This stormwater BMP then is proposed to discharge out of the northwest corner of the site and connect into an existing storm sewer system. The variance is being requested because under existing conditions, there is no discharge in this northwest corner into that storm sewer. So under existing conditions, those flow rates are zero. Under proposed, they're greater than zero. Even though they're going into a storm sewer, it would require a variance. So if we look at what that means in terms of flow rates, the bottom line in the table up here, we can see discharging to 168. Again, existing conditions, all zeros across the board. Under proposed conditions, it ranges anywhere from roughly one cubic foot per second for the snowmelt event up to 3.6 CFS for the 100-year storm event. up to uh, three point six CFS for the one hundred year storm event. So because we're going from zero to some number, it is a substantial variance. It's changing where water is going.
Can I? Can I ask a quick question on that? If you go back to that slide, the water coming off sheet flow across the north, that then goes across lots that are already developed? And does that then go into a storm drain?
President Peterson, Manager Siegler, yes, you are correct. It sheet flows off to the north through residential yards, hits North Manor Road, isn't collected in a storm sewer system. This proposed storm sewer that they're looking at replacing actually connects up with that same storm sewer system.
Thank you.
Uh, Madam Chair?
Yes, Manager Cook.
Uh, while we're on this subject, so the question to me is, um, when you add all this up and all the s- the storm sewers, is the total discharge going to be greater than existing? Which I think you know the answer, but tell.
The the total discharge from the site, if you look at it in aggregate, would be less than existing conditions.
And how many different? Uh, put it this way, it compared to the way it is now, how many different outflows are there? I mean, does everything currently now and ultimately end up in a stormwater pipe or not?
Manager Cook, eventually it would get to some storm sewer pipe, but it's going in different directions. The majority of the site goes to the north. Some of it goes towards Duck Lake.
Oh, I see. And then only s- and so where is this water going to be discharged that north, you know, west corner? What where ultimately is that discharged to?
That is a great question and I'll be a good segue into the next slide.
Okay.
So the next slide, um, we're looking at the next two criteria, which to boil it down is we're looking at potential impacts off-site on adjacent properties. So currently the storm sewer system that's out there today runs from this low area west of one hundred and sixty-eighth. That flow gets into a storm sewer system, runs along the east side under the Boulevard in a storm sewer to North Manor Road, then goes east into a small holding pond. That holding pond then discharges into storm sewer, gets into a larger holding pond, which discharges into storm sewer, which ultimately ends up in Purgatory Creek.
Mr. Sobeck, could you make that bigger by any means or not? Yes, the pictures that you were referring to.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes, Manager Cook.
So, Mr. Sobeck, as a result of this, is the rate that is going to go into Purgatory Creek? Is that increasing then?
From the information that's been submitted, the rate getting into Purgatory Creek does not appear to be increasing. However, with respect to the the variance that's being addressed and asked for with that increase in rate in this storm sewer pipe, um, they're proposing to upsize the storm sewer because without doing so, it was causing adverse impacts to this existing flooding area west of one hundred and sixty-eight by just putting that flow in the existing eighteen-inch pipe. They're proposing to upsize that to a twenty-one-inch pipe and they analyzed what that would do in the various low areas that we see here. Um, you can see I've highlighted numbers in red where there an increase and just bolded them black where there is a decrease. Uh, several of these increases, I've added that, well, it might be a one point one nine foot increase. It's still contained within the storm sewer system itself. It's not getting up above the rim of the manhole. So it's not impacting anybody. It's contained in the storm sewer. But if we look at point six and seven underneath the hundred year, we can see that there's a tenth of a foot or almost two tenths of a foot increase at this location with that existing low area, that existing holding pond. So there is a a slight increase there. It does provide benefit to the low area on the west where we do see um, a slight, a tenth of a foot decrease at location number one.
So again, if I if I can, Madam Chair?
Yes.
So a- again, I guess my my concern and I think our when we don't want to increase the outflow off of the prop- off of the properties as a general rule, right? Because it could affect other properties and now you get into machinations looking about what are the, you know, the downstream effects. So again, I come back to the point of are we going to be increasing, you know, the the rate of discharge into the creek?
Managers, the rate of discharge into the creek is not something that's been analyzed in any detail.
Hmm.
Um, it is something that the applicants modeling, they built their model off of the district's model. It is in there. We could confirm that it would be decreasing. From the information I've seen thus far, um, I understand that this low area to the north would be decreasing in that hundred-year event. And if the elevation decreases, the flow rate in the storm sewer will be decreased.
Well, i- if I can continue, Madam Chair?
Yes, Manager Cook.
You know, you you know, my my concern is, you know, like, you know, one of the things is, are we going to impact downstream? I believe that's one of our criteria. So if we don't have the data to or or analysis to be able to determine, are we going to be increasing the rate of discharge into the creek? You know, I have an issue with that because uh, you know, more rate, more energy, more erosion, I think is 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 the end result. So I would want to know that by allowing this increased rate off the site, that we are not increasing the rate that which is going to end up going into the creek because I don't want the creek being roded anymore uh, than it is because, you know, we're either have or will be spending money, you know, protect to protect that creek. So can yet if we don't have the information, I think we should get that information.
President Peterson?
Yeah.
We do have the applicant's engineer and the applicant here. They may have some knowledge of that.
Yes.
Yes. Um, I need to micro.
Yeah.
Tested first.
Yeah, it's flashing green and red and once it turns fully green, it's good to go.
Uh, good evening. I'm John Bender, uh, with James R. Hill, the civil engineer on the project, working with Brandal Anderson. Yes, uh, what Mr. Sobeck has said is is correct. We've taken the uh, model that the watershed had for the overall site and we added our proposed model. We ran through several different iterations uh, looking at um, downstream and in fact, in this case, upstream impacts for that uh, low area to the west. And essentially what we tried to do was balance um, our impact as best we could and minimize any downstream uh, uh, impacts as as much as we could. Um, as far as what ultimately reaches Riley Purgatory or Riley Creek, rather, um, we don't, I don't have that number with me right now. Um, the criteria that as I understand it, the criteria that we're held to is what is our discharge from the site, from our from our site? As an aggregate, we are reducing our rate of that's.
But I believe we are meeting the intent of the rule, uh, but we are having to ask for variance by just starting into that storm sewer pipe. Uh, essentially what we're doing is we're bypassing, uh, running our discharge across the neighbors' properties to the north, getting it directly into the storm sewer pipe, which as Mr. Sobeck said, it drains north and then west along North Manor Road. So ultimately it ends up into the same pipe as it would even if we did just drain north across those properties to the north. So we we feel that this is a an improvement in that we're not creating a nuisance condition for this properties to the north while also still rubbing ultimately the water to the same location. So that was the intent of our design and our request as part of this um, variance. I'm not sure if I asked answered this question, actually. I'll let it think about it.
Yeah, Madam Chair?
Yes, Manager Cook.
Well, well, again, I if I'm correct, I think to one of the criteria does, you know, granting the variance cause any other, you know, issues? And what I want to know is, will it affect or increase adversely uh, affect the rate of flow into the creek? And I think those are legitimate questions because they're asking for a variance off of the site. And ultimately that water has to go somewhere um, and at a certain rate. So that's what I want to know because and then the second question is, uh, is there something that can be done that would uh, decrease? Uh, you know, we're we're saying, let's put it that way. If we're not increasing the discharge into the creek, I I don't see a problem. If we're increasing the rate of discharge in the creek, I think that's a problem. And before I would agree to or to a variance, I would need to know what, if anything, can be done to um, prevent that rate of discharge into the creek from increasing.
Madam President.
Are are you done, Manager Cook?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
So, Mr. Sobeck, I I thought you said, or maybe the engineer did, that the the overall flow rate from the entire property is less than it currently is now.
That's correct.
So isn't, doesn't that answer the question?
Madam Chair?
That the flow rate, you you're saying that the new proposal, there's a reduction in the overall site into the storm water?
Correct. The overall, so if you look at existing conditions compared to proposed.
It's less.
The overall proposed flow rate from the site in aggregate is less than existing conditions.
So does that not answer the question or or doesn't it? Or what am I missing?
There's also the component of of timing that comes into play.
Okay.
So there there could be a shift in timing enough.
Okay.
Well, there was discussion going on, though I did look at the model really quick for the hundred year and the flows going into the creek are less under proposed conditions than existing conditions for the one hundred year storm. That's what I have with the information I have in front of me.
Okay, if I could ask one more follow-up question on on the report. If you look at page eleven once on on this report, this is part of your overall summary. There's a statement in the in there that, uh, I understand is, so the engineer makes no determination as to whether or not there's adequate technical basis for the managers to rely on the grant requested variance. What does that mean?
What what that means is there's a lot of information for the managers to consider. And there's the possibility that there could be other information like Manager Cook was was asking for to help inform the decision. So we're we're leaving it to the managers to make a decision on on the validity of the information and the adequacy of the information to draw your conclusion.
I thought that was your role.
President Peterson, Managers. So there are, with every development, there is a proposed scenario. Seventeen lots. Where you look at with what's proposed, can they meet the standards? Uh, and are they meeting it? The managers are the body that has discretion to ask other questions beyond, here's the site you're proposing. Can you meet the standards? So are there ways that they could mitigate and not have a need for variance? Of course there are. Can they still meet their development objectives? Probably not. So that's where that statement comes from.
Did you have a question?
I do have a question, Madam President, if I could ask. So, um, the amount that leaves the site is less, but it's changing the direction. And obviously they've already discovered through analysis that the pipe that they were going to put all the water in isn't big enough. Right? So downstream from that pipe, which is uh, goes into Purgatory Creek. Uh, it stops on the way in number six there, which is a stormwater pond, I believe. And um, has analysis been done? Um, you know, when it gets to the pond, is it how much more? You said the elevation goes up a small amount?
About a tenth of a foot at this location for the hundred-year event.
So six inches seems like it could be pretty significant depending on the stormwater pond. And um, the out that from the pond, then that goes by pipe directly to Purgatory Creek. Is that?
From area six, it's put in a pipe and then discharges to the other low area to the north. And then it gets into storm sewer and ultimately gets to Purgatory.
So on the complete path, um, we know that number six goes up up to six inches.
No, it goes it goes up a tenth of a foot, so a little over an inch.
A little over an inch. Okay, I had had that number wrong from what you said. Um, and the stormwater pond below that, does that elevation change?
At number six, it changes. At number one, there's a decrease in elevation.
Right, but the one that's uh, the pipe from number six, that doesn't go to number one, does it?
No, it it flows to the north. It flows up on the page.
Okay, so it flows to, you don't have a number on that one that. Yeah, that one.
Correct.
With the arrows. Um, but did you calculate the uh, increase in elevation, if any?
With anticipating that question coming up, I spoke with the engineer earlier today. They ran the analysis and correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the elevation in this northern area is going for the one hundred-year event would go down about two tenths of a foot, a little over two tenths of a foot.
That's right. So if there's more flow, how does it go down?
Right.
Managers, it has a lot to do with the timing of the flow.
Right. So it's just a guess about how that timing is really going to work. How much water do we get in a short period of time? If we get a lot of water in a short period of time, a lot of this is just conjecture. It's not really addressing the worst possible thing that could happen.
It's based on the best available modeling that we have.
Right.
And the standard storm events that the industry uses.
Madam Chair?
No model is perfect.
Yes, Manager Cook.
Well, so to, so just so I understand this, so my concern is is that we're, if we increase the rate into the creek, you know, the rate means more energy going in there means that, you know, a higher chance of more erosion. So the real question is, is the piping out of that northernmost pond? Okay, is that such that we're already there that does that control the maximum rate? That's going to go there in there or is the fact is is that's, you know, the rate is much lower than the capacity of the pipe so that the rate actually going into the creek could go up uh, under this this development, proposed development? You understand what I'm saying?
President Peterson, Manager Cook, the the pipe is not sized to handle all of the flow for the one hundred-year event. So the pipe is at capacity under existing and proposed conditions. But there is overland flow that can happen as well. These areas naturally will overflow if the pipe can't handle it.
But 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 I guess my question is, is, I mean, that's a retention pond, right? That north one? I mean, is there room to adjust so that the rate could be can be uh, out of it, can be controlled so that it doesn't exceed the current uh, maximum rates or rates that we've, you know, determined for that uh, discharge?
Manager Cook, the rate for the one hundred-year event out of this pond will decrease because the the elevation of the pond has decreased for the one hundred-year event. There is no excess capacity in this pond to raise water levels. Um, the the blue outline here is the one hundred-year inundation area. You can see it's already up against several homes. So the fact that the proposed condition is lowering the elevation in this area would provide some um, flood relief for these these three homes. um flood relief for these these three homes.
Well, I'm not sure. So based on what you're telling me, though, is the, isn't the fact that the maximum rate is going, won't exceed what it is today? Because you're not changing that outlet pipe, right?
Out of this pond.
The rate will change a little bit because you got less elevation, less pressure, you know, I get all, you know, I get that. But are you, so what you're telling me is the discharge rate ultimately out of that pipe will be no different, the pipe that goes from that northern one to the creek will not be higher than what it is today. In a 100 year event, so.
Correct.
Okay, so that's where I was trying to go. And what I wanted to know was, is there going to be an adverse impact on that creek? You know, from the increased rate and what I, if I'm correct, you're telling me, no, the rate won't be any greater than what it is or could be today?
That's correct.
Okay, got it. Okay, I'm finished. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, I do have a comment to make, and that is that they're coming asking for a variance. But the reason why they're coming to ask us for the variance is because they're creating this issue for themselves. They're taking a single family lot and they're putting 17 homes on that lot. Now, I don't know about all of you, but 17 homes on a single family lot, they've created this issue all for themselves. They're asking us for the variance to accommodate their 17. I'm sorry, but it's no for me. It's a no.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, I ask for your attention first, please.
Thank you.
Madam President, I did drive by the site. And um, you know, the fact that it was is currently a single family lot. It's basically, uh, how many acres is it?
About six and a half.
Six and a half acres of woods.
Right.
Which has a house and a couple of outbuildings. And uh, it's fairly dense woods right now. Uh, with a small driveway going into a relatively modest home with some uh barns or outbuildings that don't look like they're too good of shape. But um, it's a piece of land that's kind of uh out there that never really got developed. Beyond being, I don't know if it was a farm at one point, the trees look pretty big. You know, but then there's none that are like really old growth oaks that we could see from the rough. But um, it looks like it's just a a segment of land that never really got developed. You know, somebody was living there and they decided to keep it the way it was. They can't see all their neighbors because the trees leaf out and you can't see through the woods. So um, but how big are the uh 17 lots? How many acres apiece?
It'd be an acre or 17 of them on the deck.
A fraction of it.
Yeah, tiny.
Ma- Madam Chair, if if Manager Ziegler said.
Uh, he, excuse me, the engineer is responding.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure if this is still on, but um roughly were roughly a quarter acre lots. And some of them are a little bit smaller than that, but they're they're combined with the zoning that they just put to the site.
Okay, now, Manager Cook.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, you you know, Madam Chair, I I'm in agreement with you is is that I think this is an issue with all of our variances. Because to my recollection, it was every variance as a result of somebody wanting to do something. And um, I don't think there's ever any natural uh impossibilities. And I think this is something we need to examine as part of our our rules, okay? But what the last comment, but my manager Ziegler pains me the most, but we don't have rules about it, is that if this is forested and these trees are going to be gone, it just pains me. I mean, it's a, it's, these are all ecological disasters when we're taking out all these trees. And we can have EHPH all day long. And unfortunately, we don't have anything in our rules to say, wait a minute. Okay, you can't do it. It's gonna, and I'm afraid it's gonna end up like that one lot north of, I don't know, in Chanhassen where we went out and visited on the tour. And you take a wooden lot, stripped it, and then you got these spindly little one inch trees in every corner. I mean, that's something we really need to look at from a climate change, you know, water infiltration perspective. And uh so, but unfortunately, it, they're they're not in our rules and and I agree, I think we have a basis, we could say no by saying, you know, the applicant created it. But we haven't done that in other cases, so I'm not sure we can or should be doing it in this case. I aggressed.
Any other comments from any of the other managers?
One question.
Yes.
How much transpiration have we lost?
Manager Crafton, that is a good question, and it has not been computed.
Because that's where water goes. It also goes into water vapor that cools the local atmosphere, so you're just created a heat island effect and exacerbated from, so.
So managers, we need to do something. Are we?
Yes.
Come here, another comment.
Yes.
So to Manager Cook's comments and other comments, we're talking about rules that don't seem to fit the current circumstances and the last set of rules about the development. We're making broad comments again about how we should be looking at, the city should be looking at it differently, we should be looking at it differently. It doesn't seem like it's our role to be, I mean, we could, we can raise the questions, but it seems like the city is the one that should be on the front end of this process, the permitting and what they're doing, which I presume they are. Or is this part of that? It 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 doesn't seem like we should be the one deciding the development as it fits in with the city and and whether or not it got developed last year, five years ago, or whatever, it's a chunk of land that was there. It has trees and and would be a shame to see the trees go. But it's private property and they want to make it look like a new version of everything else that's around it. And I guess I don't understand how that that's our role to make that decision if they're complying with the water issues.
But they're asking for us to give them a variance to let them do this. And they're the one that's creating the problem.
President.
Yes.
Peterson, the buck stops here. Not just with the city, we get a vote on this, so.
So, I'm sorry.
Manager Ziegler.
So it seems like to me that, you know, we're leaning towards denying the variance. But uh, it seems like it also behooves us to say, what changes could they make to uh the plan? Um, you know, if we were 15 houses instead of 17, it's not a huge difference, but would it, would it eliminate the need for the variance?
And you're so big.
Manager Ziegler, that is another question that we anticipated coming up. Um, and I know that the applicant's engineer, John, did go ahead and run several different scenarios. John, I'm going to paraphrase, so correct me if I'm wrong. But they they ran one scenario that they looked at the site and reduced the impervious coverage by 30%. So pretty significant reduction of imperviousness. And they would still need to ask for a variance. It had very little impact on the the flood elevations at that area six in particular. Um, it would likely reduce the the rates leaving the sites slightly. But that flood elevation really wouldn't change at area six.
Yes, that that is correct. We read those numbers today and I would, um, I'm going to digress just a little bit and take an opportunity. Originally, I looked at options of trying to avoid this variance. And one of the the solution that I see that would be needed be, because right now we're sheet flowing to the north. And in order to continue to um mimic that condition in the proposed situation, I would need a a long narrow BMP along pretty much the entire width of the property that basically is along where that she flows then off to the properties to the north. Uh, and doing so then would take out all those trees on that north slope that are currently preserving or we're proposing to preserve. Um, and also do significant, but what's maybe not shown on this graphic very well is that green shaded area is also, it also had some slope to it. So we'd have to cut into that quite a bit and disturb that entire slope. Um, so I, it it was in my opinion that this variance was necessary for development and also necessary to help preserve at least something out there and preserve some of the trees. So I I think that's another benefit that's made.
Manager, uh, excuse me, Manager Cook, Engineer Sobek, do you have any other recommendations of what they could do to help this?
Managers, um, like uh John Bender just indicated, you know, significantly changing the the layout and changing the BMP and going back to mimicking how the flow leaves the site um would would be one option. Another option um could be, and again, I'm I'm speculating, you need to run the numbers, right? Uh, you could look at possibly providing some type of mitigating measure at that area six so that the flood elevation doesn't increase. I don't know how feasible that is, given the the volume of water that we're talking about. Um, again, it would be sort of a more of a looking beyond just the six and a half acres, but looking downstream and how would you mitigate this as more of a system as a whole, as opposed to just looking at what can be done within this six and a half acres? Um, I I found it really interesting that the 30% reduction in imperviousness essentially had no impact downstream. Um, so that would be something we could dig into a little bit more. That that's what I've got off the top of my head.
Uh, Minister Jester.
President Peterson, I will talk about the elephant in the room. Has reuse been looked at on this site?
Yeah.
And would that have any benefit? I know that's one of the common arguments, we don't have an HOA who's going to do it. But again, form an HOA. So I don't know if that's been looked at or not.
Manager Cook, you had another comment or question?
I I I did, but first of all, go back to Administrator Jeffrey. Could you just flush that out a little bit? Did you, were you talking about re- reuse program?
Yeah, utilizing the water back on site to irrigate their green space um on the lawns.
But.
I don't know that it turned out the same way that the 30% reduction does, but uh I do. It is another option that could be looked at.
Well, is it, it, so I'll continue on this, I mean, can you make the the holding pond, you know, holding pond bigger? And, you know, is that the the part of it? And then, like you said, use some, have some reuse? I mean, reusing the water is a great thing because, you know, we we're sitting on an aquifer that, you know, by our stupidity, we're going to end up draining one of these days. So I believe in reuse would be terrific to build that in to this entire project rather than using, you know, water from however many thousand feet deep. So that that, I mean, that's not a bad idea. I I just, what we're dealing with is the rate of the water leaving the site and what impact is that going to have, you know, downstream? And it seems to me that if if we're not adversely impacting the creek um and those other two uh locations, that's what they're there for, they're holding ponds for water, I guess, I I don't see why we wouldn't approve this. Even though the fact is, I don't like all of the impervious, you know, surface, I don't like taking out all the trees. But, you know, I can dislike something all day long, that doesn't mean, you know, we can stop it. And I think, again, I'll repeat, we've had many of these variances where it it, none of them that I recall was uh was the result of something other than the developers' actions. So um, I I guess I would be leaning toward approving uh uh, you know, proving the various on the stipulation that it is confirmed that the rate of discharge to the creek is not more than what it currently is under the, you know, various uh, you know, 10 year, 100 year, et cetera scenarios.
Is that a motion, Manager Cook?
Well, I can make it a motion, sure.
Go ahead.
So basically, a motion to adopt the variance with that condition that I just mentioned.
Do we have a second?
Oh, I second, but I want to add that anywhere along the line. I mean, the creek is uh one issue, but uh the current logic is the one pond goes up, the other pond goes down. Um, you know, what are the problems there? You know, can we uh if it doesn't affect anything downstream, that's above the ground, right? If the new pipe is big enough to handle coming off the uh new pond. Well, let me, let me take it back. I I think making the new pond bigger is another good option. I'm not going to second.
Anybody else second, okay? Okay, so it looks like we have a motion.
One other question.
Yes.
How much contamination is going up off of that and into the water that's going through the pipes that's going to the creek?
So, managers, from a water quality perspective, their proposed design does meet the district's criteria for water quality. They are reducing total suspended solids and phosphorus relative to the existing conditions.
But not salt.
Right.
Fertilizer and toxins and.
Are we ready to vote? Yes.
Matt Olson with Brenn Landson Homes and I'm the man or the applicant. Um, so I appreciate everybody's input tonight. Uh, you know, our our goal is to improve the neighborhood, um, improve the area. And we're hoping that by doing this development that we're showing that. Uh, we've worked closely with the city to date uh to minimize the effect on the trees. So there's some historical, I think you call them um significant heritage trees that we're we're keeping on there. Uh, we're replacing a bunch of, you know, the trees that we're having to take down, but we're we're minimizing um our lot sizes to kind of accommodate saving a lot of trees. Uh, but we're also keeping our lot sizes to the city zoning, so every lot is but the zoning is for that property. Uh, we did get a big border, a zero uh planning commission approval for the site a month ago. And then last night, uh, city council approved our permit for the site. So just wanted to share that uh.
Okay, I think we're ready for the vote. Mr. Smith.
On the most approved of variance with the condition to confirm uh that there would be no rate of increase in discharge to the creek. Uh, Manager Crafton?
No.
Manager Duvel?
Yes.
Manager Cook?
Yes.
Manager Ziegler?
No.
President Peterson?
No.
Fails two to three.
Time and and your input, um, is there a criteria that you maybe can give some direction you can give to me so that I know how I can go back to the drawing board? Isn't there something that is it, is it simply that that tenth increase in bounce downstream that we're able to uh find a way to mitigate that with that? Will alleviate your concerns?
For me, um, my objection is that you're coming to us putting 17 homes on a single family six acre lot. And I think the fact that uh Engineer Sobek has talked about timing, I'm looking at climate change and I'm thinking, we're going to get a huge amount of rain in a very short period of time. And to try to guess using today's assumptions, using data as your modeling, that's not going to take care of it in the long run.
So.
That's my opinion.
Okay, so you're you're probably going to vote no on any variance requests, even? Okay, so you're you're probably going to vote no on any variance request, even?
Not necessarily. I'm looking for something better than what you're bringing to us.
Madam Chair.
So we're approving the situation for Riley Creek as far as what the engineers, I'm not an engineer, so I'm just listening to the calculations that they made on, you know, a hundred year event. And that information as I'm led to believe is that we're approving that that situation at the creek. And if you hear that rate with it with our proposed development.
From what what this will be found that, yeah, the modeling with the rigging pool that we're providing, we would be ultimately discharging at a lower rate system. That is correct.
Depending on the timing.
Yes, but we we can only use the tools that we have.
Engineer Soviet.
President Patterson. I I wish the answer was black and white, but it's really not in this instance. Part of part of what we're dealing with is we're dealing with a development that's coming in, increasing imperviousness on a restricted site, so they're not able to provide the abstraction that the rules would require. So they're providing as much as they possibly can. As a result, there is an increase in runoff volume leaving this site. So while the rates in aggregate are going down, the volume of water leaving the site tends to be increasing, not just for the hundred year event, but for those lower events too. So you can provide rate control and show that there's not an increase in rate getting to the creek for the one hundred year event. So let's just let's just call it a hundred and eighty CFS off of this watershed is getting to the creek under today's condition. Hundred and eighty CFS is getting there under proposed conditions. But what is the duration of that fall? That duration, the same, really close, longer? That's something that would should be considered because it's you think about it, if you got a garden hose and you put it on the ground for thirty seconds, it doesn't do much damage. But if you leave it there for a week, it will eventually start to cause erosion. So it's there's stream power is what I'm I'm getting at. It's a complicated question. I think there are, I think there are things that can be done to reduce the magnitude of the variance request.
Reuse of water.
Reuse could be could be one of those.
Right.
And I guess at this point, I would encourage the developer, the applicant, John, to work with us to see and come up with other iterations, brainstorm. But that, my opinion, the board gets to make the decision.
Patterson, manager Crafton.
Thank you. Also, it's going to depend on what kind of vegetation is on there. Because if you just got turf grass and you irrigate it, where's it going to go? Because it's not going to infiltrate, right? So a lot of it's what the choices they make and what they put on the land.
Does that give you some direction?
Madam Chair.
Yep, yes, been waiting for a while.
Okay, manager cook, yes.
Well, I I think it's important to go back and remember, a- as I said, I don't like the tree, you know, losing trees. I don't like a lot of things, but it's because I don't like it means I can, you know, I have a right to vote no or not approve this. And I go back to page two, okay, of the report. And the only item that they don't satisfy is the rate. They apparently satisfy volume, water quality, every other one of our criteria. And it's the rate leaving the site. And that's why I asked the question, though, what is the impact of the fact that we have the increased rate? Because if the increased rate is already going into holding ponds that already exist, okay, that's what they were designed for. And so the ultimate question is that's why I asked it. What is the impact on the creek? And if the rates to the creek aren't any different, okay, then I think is why I voted to approve that variance. If the rates increase, because that means more power, more and more erosion, that's true. And I know Mr. Soviet raised volume, but according to this, they meet the volume requirement. So if they don't meet the volume requirement, that's a whole different kettle of fish, as they say. So I I I don't see why we would not approve this based upon our rules if it is in fact true. And that's why I added to the to the variance that we had to verify that the rate of flow into the creek was not going to be increased. So I just put that on the record. And if we think, excuse me, if we think things that should be different, we need to change our rules, which it's been a theme of mine this entire meeting. So I I I rest.
Madam President.
Yes.
So I would think that, you know, there's a couple of things that could be done. Increasing the size of the onsite stormwater pond could help reduce the flow rate and reduce the increase in pond number six. And the water reuse could reduce the flow rate and the flow volume because a lot of it, even if it is going on turf grass, it's going to evaporate. It's not going to absorb like it would if it were native plants. That'd be better, you know, rain garden in each lot would be better. So I I could see things that would help it so you don't need the the variance. And, you know, maybe you don't get a hundred percent there, but if you get, you know, seventy, eighty percent there, that's that's a big deal.
Okay, so I think we've addressed that permit. And I believe that because we did not approve zero seven seven, we don't approve the next item, which would be item E, as we had the first one fail. So we move forward on to permit twenty twenty four zero zero eight, Chan Hassan Apartments. And engineer Soviet.
President Patterson, I'll share my screen and give a high level overview of this permit.
We already talked about that one.
Already talked about that one. That's the next one. Permit twenty four zero zero eight, Chan Hassan Apartments. This is the redevelopment of the area that is currently occupied by the Country Inn and Suites and the Chan Hassan Movie Theater. And they're looking at demoing those those buildings and replacing it with a multi-use facility, family facility, mixed-use retail, restaurant, some onsite parking and some underground parking. It is the redevelopment of an area that's roughly four point seven acres. They're looking at increasing the imperviousness on the site. From a stormwater management perspective, they are incorporating a large underground storage system to detain the water. They are installing a stormwater reuse system to irrigate all the green space on the site. They're proposing two tree trenches to treat runoff and provide some additional evapotranspiration. They've got a small area of green roof that they're proposing, roughly thirteen hundred square feet. And they're also proposing three bay filters, which are are stormwater cartridge systems that they filter, they filter runoff through them to meet the stormwater water quality criteria. So if we look at compliance, they are meeting the the requirements. We are suggesting some conditions that are very typical for this type of a permit. One being name of the erosion control person responsible during construction. They have a slight over increase in rate for the snow melt event. But in talking with the applicant's engineer, some minor tweaks, they'll be able to get that under control. We've got a couple of other conditions here related for water quality. One, we just want to ensure that there is some pre-treatment of runoff getting into those tree trenches so that they function long term. And that they list on the plan sheets what type of media will be used in the cartridge for those bay filters. There are different cartridges, the ones that are used in the modeling. We want to ensure that that's what the contractor will install, so we have a condition. And then the other typical condition that we're recommending is related to maintenance, which is a recordation of a stormwater facility, maintenance and operating plan. Beyond that, from a chlorine management perspective, we've got our typical stipulation in there that before the project can be closed out and their financial assurance return, they need to provide a chloride management plan so that they identify who is responsible for applying salt to the impervious areas out there and that they've been certified by the MPCA. And then related to permit fees, we're looking at replenishing the permit fee and then recommending the financial assurance based on the financial assurance schedule the district has approved. So overall, they're in compliance. There's a few conditions that they need to cross the I's, dot the T's. And that brings us to the recommendation of approval contingent upon the conditions we discussed.
So I'd like to make a motion to approve permit twenty twenty four dash zero zero eight with all of the conditions listed by the engineer Soviet.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, manager cook.
I move to amend the resolution, hopefully a friendly one to add the second resolution on page one of the staff report, which basically provides for issuance of the permit upon satisfaction of conditions, et cetera, et cetera.
You agree.
I accept that as a friendly amendment.
Yes. All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none.
I have one, Madam President.
Yes.
So Mr. Soviet, could you just explain a little bit for me? And maybe I'm the only one here, but just talking about volume abstraction as it relates to this project here, just how what it means is going from point five five inches. You don't have to answer it here, you can talk about it later.
Hey, it looks like we can go to the vote unless we have any other questions.
Talking about clay.
Mr. Smith.
Manager Crafton?
Yes.
Manager Duvel?
Yes.
Manager cook?
Yes.
Manager Ziegler?
Yes.
President Patterson?
Yes.
She carries five to zero.
All right, we're on to permit twenty twenty four dash zero one three, Chan View Street Reconstruction variance request.
President Patterson, managers, I will start and introduce the project. Chan Hassan and their consulting engineer are with us this evening. If you'll recall, they they were before you three, four months ago now, three months ago now. We talked about a regional system. As for that regional system, they had three overall projects that they wanted to be able to utilize that regional system for. One is, one of them being the Chan View project that's before you tonight. Engineer Soviet will walk through the project and the variance that's being requested. I guess I would like to ask the managers if they would like city to join us at the table for this discussion or call and response back there. I'll leave it to the managers to decide how they'd like.
I still have him at the table.
Come and join us. Engineer Soviet, are you going to kind of lead us through this?
I will lead us through this. So twenty point four zero one three, the Chan View Street Reconstruction Project is the area essentially just to the north of downtown Chan Hassan. So the project itself will involve approximately three miles of street reconstruction and rehabilitation. The image that I've got in the the lower right hand corner here, it's colorful. It was very helpful. I was appreciative that the applicant provided this because it really lays out what they're doing in the different streets. The green is a full depth reconstruction, being that they would need to provide stormwater management for that area. The areas in orange are more of a typical Millan overlay, which would be a pavement rehabilitation, which is exempt from the stormwater criteria. This other line I've got drawn across here that's in purple is a watershed divide. Bigger, yeah, we can make it bigger. Thank you. It it represents a watershed divider or break. The area north of the line goes, it's in the Lotus Lake watershed, so that runoff will get to Lotus Lake. The area to the south gets to Rice Marsh Lake. In terms of stormwater management that they're proposing on the site, they've got four biofiltration basins, three in the Lotus Lakes sub watershed, one in the Rice Marsh Lakes sub watershed. There are a couple of rain gardens that are also proposed. They have a manufactured treatment device, which is an existing device that treats runoff off of Del Rio Road that they'll be utilizing to help comply with water quality criteria. And then they are looking at constructing a regional stormwater reuse system as part of a future project that would provide the necessary water quality removals for this project. The next image, and I'll deepen that a little bit here too. Administrator Jeffrey had talked about three projects that would be looking at utilizing this regional reuse system. The first project would be this Chan View neighborhood. Second project would be the Chan Hassan Civic Campus redevelopment, which the application is currently in and under review. The third project would be reconstruction of Market Boulevard. And when Market Boulevard goes to reconstruction, it's in the opportune time to build the reuse system because it will require a significant piping to be put in underneath Market Boulevard to get water from an existing stormwater pond where all the runoff from this area currently drains back north to the city and school districts, green space to use for irrigation. So they'll be installing a forest man essentially to get the water up to irrigate those.
So the just can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
So in relation to that, the different projects have different timing. How how long are we talking about before the the full reuse system is in place?
Right, so the Chan View Street Reconstruction is scheduled to happen in twenty twenty four with a little bit of work carrying over site restoration into twenty twenty five. The Chan Hassan Civic Campus is work that they want to start in twenty four, will continue into twenty five and twenty six is when it would be wrapped up. The Market Boulevard reconstruction is scheduled for construction in twenty twenty five.
So they're they're asking this to be approved before they actually have the pond available. That's the reuse system. They're they're asking us to approve this before they have the the fix for it. Is that correct?
They're they're asking for approval of the a change in the timing, yes. Where the streets would get reconstructed in twenty four, the reuse system would get constructed in twenty five. And that's one of the variances that we'll talk about.
President Patterson, managers, I do want to remind you all that when they were before you earlier, they did mention this timing. Would that be?
And we we were supportive, at least I was.
Oh, the whole project, I think, is great, but.
Yeah. Yeah. Well.
Don't know if we want to dump all that stuff where there's no place for it to go at the moment.
President Peterson, that, that brings up a good point, that the current drainage, and I'll zoom back into the image. The entire watershed drains to an existing stormwater pond that's there today. Um, that, the, the watershed district actually conducted a project in 2007 to improve the performance of this pond, to act as a regional treatment pond. So this runoff from the site will be treated before it gets to Rice Marsh Lake, even under existing conditions, or when they reconstruct it.
Okay.
So that's one of the things that I'll, I'll mention again when we talk through In terms of, of compliance, again, um, just get right to the point, they're, they're meeting everything they can except for a low floor criteria with, related to locating a couple of their best management practices, the, uh, rain gardens. And then, so they're asking for variance from that. And then the other variance that I've mentioned before was related to the timing of implementation. So the first variance request is related to, uh, the low floor criteria that the district has, um, which the low floor criteria that are in the rules says that the low floor of an existing structure next to a proposed stormwater facility should be at least two feet above the 100-year flood elevation, or one foot above the overflow from that stormwater facility. That's sort of the first check. If you can't meet that criteria, there's an alternative path through the rule that allows you to look at what that stormwater sitting in this facility would do to groundwater, how it would mound the groundwater over time, and if that would impact the basement, the low floor. In these instances, um, the location of these facilities is such that the 100-year flood elevation is above the existing low floors, and they're not able, able to provide the necessary separation to groundwater to call for the, the mounding.
Can you, is it the two larger green triangles that we're referring to?
Yep. So just to, to help orientate people where these are, there's one in the Rice Marsh Lakes sub watershed, uh, near the existing water tower. Um, that's where one of these rain gardens would go. The other one is up here, just to the northwest of, uh, Santa Fe and Great Plains Boulevard. I've zoomed in a little bit closer here so that you can see where these BMPs would be placed relative to the structures. At the water tower site, large rain garden filtration basin, biofiltration basin, they are proposing an underdrain under both of these. That would be about 15 feet away from the existing home with a low floor. The one in the northeast corner off of Santa Fe is about 80 feet away from the existing structure.
So what, what number of feet would be acceptable with the soil in here?
So it's a combination of soil and where the existing groundwater elevation is, which is a good segue into this, where we go through this type of analysis where you look at how far away you are from the structure, and what is the separation that's needed between the groundwater level and the low floor. So the further away you get, the less separation you need, meaning that existing groundwater can be closer to the low floor. Given where these are located, we're looking at needing a minimum separation of six feet at one site and 1.6 feet at the other. Can see the separation that's provided is less than that, and that's why they're asking for the variant.
President.
Yes.
Question for the applicants, do you have easements from the affected property owners to send the water their way?
Uh, President Peterson, um, legal advisor, um, both of these rain gardens are located on city property or within the right-of-way.
But as to the impact to the low floor of adjacent properties, have you discussed that with them, or?
Um, outreach was completed, um, via the, the, uh, regular communications with the project, but we have not specifically reached out to these two residents yet. Uh, we do plan to reach out to them, uh, in the event that this, uh, variance request is approved, um, and the project is approved and moves forward.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Manager Cook.
Well, I'd like to follow up with that. I mean, I, I, I have concerns about approving something that's going to be, you know, within, you know, the, put it this way, higher than our minimum, and cause issues, and we're going to have dissatisfied, um, residents, or they're going to have flooding, or they're going to have wet basements, or, you know, I don't know enough about the properties, but, um, I would be, I would be concerned. I'm very concerned about this type of a, type of a variance. Um, I would, so I would ask what else, what others, what, you know, what could be done to basically give the same, um, I should say protective, uh, impact that if they, the same that would, uh, occur if we, you know, if they complied with our normal rule, what else could there be? I mean, to eliminate or, uh, reduce the chances that there would be an adverse impact to these properties. And, and to add to Mr. Smith, I'm glad he raised it, I guess, I, I, anything we approve, I would have, you know, I'm going to suggest that it would be conditioned upon getting informed consent in form of whatever, you know, licenses, easements, et cetera, you know, from those property owners.
Uh, President Peterson, I would like to take a chance to answer those questions.
Sure.
Sure. Um, first of all, I, I would like to say that, you know, the city of Chanhassen, we have, uh, not only like a responsibility, but we care about our own residents. Like, we are not actively designing infrastructure that we believe will have a negative impact on any of the residents. So in these two specific scenarios, um, they were, these rain gardens or BMPs were designed to mitigate the risks. Um, so when we look at the location of the BMP and the low floor criteria, um, as Mr. Sobeck, uh, referenced, we're, we're looking at the safe passage of overflow water. So in both these scenarios, they, we analyzed i- in a flooding condition where the water would leave the site, and they, they safely, uh, do not go, the, the water would not go into anyone's low floor opening, for example. So like, the larger basin at the water tower site, um, located on the left of the screen, the discharge is into the, the right-of-way or the street where it's, the stormwater would be conveyed to the street in a, in a flooding scenario. Um, with regards to the groundwater, uh, concerns in here and potential infiltration and inflow going into a residence basement, um, I would like to highlight that this area is in Chanhassen, uh, the soils are pretty tight clay that, that in itself mitigates, uh, the amount of water that would be infiltrated into the ground. Furthermore, these rain gardens are designed to be filtration systems, um, they have drain tile in them, so that would act to wick the extra water away from the site, um, and into city-owned storm sewer. So in those two scenarios, the city believes that, um, we're mitigating the potential risks out here by, and, and also, you know, providing a benefit to the stormwater, uh, in an, and in an effort to meet, um, both the city and wire should district rules.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Manager Cook.
Well, it seemed to me, I mean, I understand, you know, what's being said, but, uh, uh, I think we need to make sure that any variance would have to, you know, incorporate those, uh, those steps and mitigation factors like the, you know, the drain tile and into the storm sewers, you know, et cetera. So, um, I'm not sure, do we have enough information in the, uh, report that, uh, that we would be assured that if the variance was approved, that, uh, those mitigation factors would in fact be required, uh, as part of, well, the ultimate permit for sure, but as a condition to the variance.
President Peterson.
Yes.
Manager Cook, um, I, I'll try to address that, the, the current plans that have been provided for review and the, the stormwater modeling that supports it does incorporate the MS filtration basins with the tile underneath, so that is part of the current plan. Clay soils are definitely there. Um, and then the overflows are routed as, uh, Mr. Seidel did indicate, so they, they will not, these will not overflow towards the structures. So those mitigation measures are part of their current plans.
So with the, if I could, excuse me, if you might, I just, I just want to confirm. So that's in the plan, there'll be the drain tile, the, do we have any, uh, study, testing, et cetera, that confirms that, you know, the fact that the soils, et cetera, uh, should be adequate to prevent the mounding, I think is what you called it, uh, before, and basically end up being as effective as if, you know, we were meeting the low level, uh, or the general requirements for, uh, low elevation. I'm not saying that very artfully, but.
So I'll, I'll paraphrase, and Mr. Seidel, you can correct me, but I, I believe as part of your, your plans and specifications, you are requiring that this clay be compacted so that we, so that we are essentially creating a liner similar to what we would in a landfill situation? Not a physical liner with, I'll call it plastic, right, or membrane, but you will compact the clay.
That is correct. I would, um, maybe make one other comment in, in that, um, in a reaction to the report that we saw, we did get together with the design team at Kimley Horn and see if there was any alternative approaches with, uh, specifically for these two rain garden sites. Um, one additional precautionary measure we could take is actually adding in a, a physical liner, uh, that would be some sort of plastic, plastic or PVC, something similar, uh, that would act to, uh, even make more of a, a barrier between the, uh, stormwater rain garden and the underlying soils to mitigate that, um, mounding condition.
So I have a question. Um, so you've got these drain tiled out to where they're going to meet, uh, the storm sewers. Um, do you have any way of making sure that your tile is really enough? Because I've seen this happen a lot of times where tile gets full of sediment and it doesn't work. Is there any way that you could consider putting in another section of storm sewer there to, to be able to make sure that you've got it carried away and maybe have a couple of, uh, catch basins or something? Do you know what I mean? It wouldn't cost you a whole lot, I don't think. Would you consider it?
Um, I, uh, President Peterson, managers, I, I think that's something we could consider. Um, I would note in this, these two locations that the stormwater is actually located fairly close to the rain gardens already, um, and that these rain gardens, the, the drain tile actually has cleanouts within the rain gardens themselves as a, an area where we can physically access that drain tile and clean it out, which is something that our public work staff regularly does. Um, so we would be monitoring these basins and with the ability to clean them out, I, I don't see that as, um, a big risk in this situation. I, uh, would maybe default to add them with the exact design, but the, I think the design meets the intent here and is, you know, is a BMP that the city can maintain and that we are confident that will be ma- will be able to maintain and make sure it functions correctly, uh, for a long, uh, for its, uh, service life.
Well, how do you feel about it, Engineer Sobeck?
President Peterson, from a, a drain tile perspective, they are proposing, uh, multiple runs of tile underneath, uh, which does add some redundancy.
Mm-hmm.
In addition, the, these areas do overflow, so if they fill up, they do overflow back to the street where it would be captured in catch basins and taken away, so the water won't just sit there. Um, I had one other thought that just went out of my mind.
Is, are you confident that where they're hitting the storm sewer, the capacity at the storm sewer is big enough to be able to handle what's running off?
Correct. That is something that they include in their stormwater modeling, is, is that capacity of the outlet as well, yes.
President.
Yes.
So are these, are these two new rain gardens, like, what, what's, what's existing where the green is now?
Yeah, those, those areas are, are characterized by turf grass.
Turf grass. So in the event of a big rain, whatever that fills up these rain gardens, how, how long would the water typically stand there and how deep is it?
It's supposed to be two days, but we'll see.
What?
It's supposed to be two days, right?
Yeah, these, the rain gardens would be designed to be at, at a minimum, um, be able to drain in 48 hours. Um, I think it would be more like 24 hours in these specific situations. The filter material that is used in the design is, uh, more of a sandy-type, uh, soil, so it's, it's got high infiltration rates. Um, so when we'd be looking at these basins, uh, if they didn't drain within 24 to 48 hours, they would be, you know, on the docket for maintenance because there would be an issue with, you know, the drain tile or something with the soil media.
So is this like, on the one on the left, is that a single-family home, both of them?
Looks like it.
Are they single-family homes?
Correct.
That is correct.
So it, it's not like in a big rain event, all of a sudden they have a, a metropolitan swimming pool next to their house, is that what it is potentially or not?
The, the depths of these rain gardens are on the order of, anatomy correct, six inches to a foot, I believe, maybe two foot at the maximum.
Uh, one, one to two feet.
So could these residents object to this plan, to your point, Louis, earlier about whether or not they've, um, signed off on, on doing this, or do they not have that right?
President, Manager Duval, um, well, to, to literally answer your question, of, of course they could object.
Yeah.
Right. But, uh, I think the basis of the question here is normally when we look at variances, uh, requests for free board requirement, it is the landowner or a developer with land rights coming to the district and saying, "We have a project and the best we can do won't meet your free board requirement." And our response is to say, "Okay, that's fine, if you voluntarily want to take on that risk, then just record it on your property so that anyone that buys the property knows that you came, you designed it, you asked for the approval, and you indemnify the district from any legal responsibility for that, that difference in risk." What's different here is that the applicant, the city has obviously put a lot of care into the design and thought to it, but they're asking, uh, permission to vary from our requir- low-floor requirement as it affects other landowners. And so that's the, the trick, I think, the unique situation we're in. And that's what invites, from a legal's perspective, to think about who's going to bear that risk.
Mm-hmm.
Madam President.
Yes.
Uh, Charlie Howley, Public Works Director with the city, nice to see you again. Just to clarify, the left image with the big blob where it says 15 feet, that big blob is on city-owned lot for our old water tower. There's not a house where that's 15 feet, like, that's not somebody's front yard. The house to the left of it is somebody else's property, private property, right? Like, one of our residents. Like one of our residents. The, the, the one on the right is all of our property and there's not a house there, just to clear that up, right? There's no water in that water tower, by the way, it's just a antenna these days. And then the one on the right is right of way, right? We've got wide right of way, a road never got built or constructed through there, so we have a little kind of driveway. And where the green blob is, is still within our right of way, and then the house is, you know, 80 feet away, so. Anecdotally reasonably, the one on the right is of much less concern, right, than the one on the left, right? So it's our plan to absolutely talk to the property owner on the one on the left, should tell them what we're doing. And it may improve their drainage, they might have wet spots in their yard that would actually end up going here, right? We, we're citing these locations at low points that have drainage problems, right, to help, right? And we're really doing these for the benefit of water quality. That's, that's the only thing, we're not trying to put water into the ground because we know the water ain't going to go into the ground. This is to filter water before it goes where it currently goes.
Storm sewer.
Providing, yes, storm sewer, yeah, thank you.
So Madam President.
Uh, yes, Manager Cook.
So it would seem to me that. You know. To, you know, I guess, you know, grant the variance, we'd want to make sure that they're going to. Have less free board than as part of this, we'd want the city to make sure that we were indemnified. If I understood Mr. Smith correctly, we certainly don't want to get in the middle of. Somebody come in saying, well, you approved it and so now you take care of our damages. And so I, I just, I think that should be part of, you know, granting the variance. I think Mr. Smith had the, had the right idea. On, on that basis, so.
Manager Crafton.
Yeah, the thing that excites me about this project, it's a regional reuse of water. So they're taking it and they're, the benefit up there is huge, so. The problem is just the timing and I don't think it's, to me, that doesn't seem like. Something that we can't overcome here, I mean. There, I mean, even the landscaping, as I recall, you were talking around city, city hall area. You were going to try to put in more natives and trees and. Things that I think are advantageous, so. I just, I really like the idea of the regional use concept and trying to take water in one place and. You know, provide benefits someplace else, so. I'm really excited about this project.
Administrator Jeffrey, I'd like to hear your thoughts on this. You, you work for Chan Hessen, you probably know that neighborhood pretty well.
That entire Carver Beach neighborhood and everything down that. Tight clay soils, groundwater issues, some complaints, but. I think overall. And I've heard the managers express this as well, there's an understanding that in order to accomplish the things that we want to accomplish. We were going to need to partner with our municipalities. I agree, and I've conveyed to the city, Chan Hessen meetings that, you know, we can engineer everything and there can be. We know that it's going to work. That's not going to change the perception of the neighbor next to it when they say, well, but my son pump started running, well, yeah, that's because the drought ended or whatever it is. But they'll, they'll point back to that item. That said. It does sound like they, I mean, there are enough mitigative things here, and I think with the indemnification. No, the, the question becomes. What's, what is more important, meeting that water quality standard, getting to that point? Or. Just not having it there really is ultimately what it boils down to. I, I think. We've come a long way in drain tile and clogging efforts, but we realize that socks are a bad thing to put on drain tiles now. And we've gotten to the point where we clean outs and, you know, Charlie Burke and his crew over there, they do a good job. Is it ideal? No. But. It seems like everything that comes before this board lately is never ideal, so.
Are you okay with the fact that there's no place for this water to go if something were to happen? Because that holding pond down there on Marketplace isn't done yet.
Well, the marketplace holding pond is done, so it is going to go there and will get treatment.
Okay, but doesn't have the capacity that it really.
It has, it's a huge, yeah, it's got, it's got the capacity. Question becomes, yeah, I mean, would I have liked to have seen the project go Great Plains Boulevard, City Campus, Chanview? Yeah. But I mean, that's not what's before us tonight, so. I, I do, you know, I would likely, and, and we've talked, Joe has been good at communicating with us. I mean, it would be good in the future to try and align these as much as possible so that we can be there. At the beginning and foresee all these issues, but I, I think they have done a very good job of coming to us. In February, you came to us with a reuse system, so. Forget that, baby steps, baby steps to the elevator.
By the way, thanks. Uh, yes, Manager Cook.
But, well, I. I thought we were just talking about the one, the, the first variation, which is simply the low floor. And I, you know, I don't, is Mr. Sobeck finished the presentation on? Is there a second part to this variance?
Managers, there, there would be a second part related to the timing of the implementation of the stormwater facilities. Current variance that we're talking about is related to the low floor.
Right.
Right, so can we continue to have the presentation on the next part of the? The variance request?
Good, Mr. Holly was asking.
You, you have a question or a comment?
Madam President. It likely will get answered with the next presentation. I wanted to clarify the regional system and what's happening because it sounds like there may be some confusion.
Okay.
About what's built and what's going to be built.
Okay, let's hear it.
Managers, the second variance that's being requested is related to the timing of implementation, implementation for the stormwater management facility. Related to the, the Chanview Neighborhood Reconstruction. I'll begin the map here. Again, all the area that's shown on this map is currently tributary to a large wet stormwater management facility, a large pond. In the northwest corner of Highway five and Market Boulevard, so that pond is existing, that pond has been there for decades. The district did do an improvement project to ensure that it was properly sized to treat its tributary drainage area. Under existing conditions. Under proposed conditions for the project at hand, the imperviousness. In this area is not changing significantly, so there isn't more significantly more pollutants being generated. That the pond needs to remove, so the current pond is functioning, it will function in the interim. I say the interim in that the reuse system itself wouldn't be slated to be constructed until 2025. Possibly put online in late 25, maybe early 26. So the timing between. The Chanview Reconstruction Project, which is the permit that we're considering in the variance. And the implementation of this reuse system is somewhere in that 12 to 18 month period. So it, it does, it, it does align, there is a little bit of overlap between the two permits that would be going. But we just wanted to make sure that it's clear, managers understood that there would be that little bit of a lag.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Manager Cook.
Well, I, I'm, I'm confused. So why do we need the second part of the variance? Because if I heard you correctly just now, I thought you said that the. Current, you know, pond will handle everything. And why, what's the significance of the delay?
The significance.
I'm not getting it, I'm sorry if I'm slow today.
Managers, so the, the reuse system that they're proposing is, is to provide water quality treatment. And for the, under, under existing conditions. They have assumed for simplicity that that current pond does not provide removals. So that they could estimate how much benefit they're really seeing from the reuse system by itself. And the reuse system by itself will provide enough water quality benefit for the Chanview Reconstruction Area. Civic Campus and some of the Market Boulevard, which other BMPs will also be proposed. The other piece is from an abstraction perspective. This is a large reuse system that the Chanview Neighborhood itself is a restricted site. We were talking about groundwater levels being high, impacting low floors, tight clays. They can't get the abstraction in that area, so they're looking at using this reuse system to provide abstraction. For the, the current permit that you're considering. So there, there's two things, there's the volume and there's the abstraction. And again, it would be about a 12 to 18 month difference. Between when that reuse system would be put online versus if those BMPs were constructed as part of the Chanview. Project itself.
Well, maybe it's easier or simpler way for, for my simple mind to figure this out. So what happens if the reuse system is never built? But it's never built for whatever reason. Would the current project, okay, or what we're going to be voting on hopefully concerning the project, what? Tell me, is there an impact, will we be violating one of our rules or conditions?
So if the current, if, if the reuse system isn't built, the analysis would take on a little bit different flair through the stormwater rule. We'd be looking at, for this permit and for the two other permits that we've talked about, the Market Boulevard project. And the Chan Hessen Civic Center, we'd be looking at those as restricted sites. We know there's clay there, we know there's groundwater concerns. So we'd be saying, okay, provide abstraction to the maximum extent practicable or doable. Which in a lot of those cases is going to be very minimal, maybe some tree trenches. So with this reuse system, you're getting the benefit of all of that water being abstracted and reused. Putting it back on the land.
I, I understand, but. I mean, if, if you have a restricted site. We don't stop you, do we, because of that? I mean, you've got to figure out where the water is going to go, right? And are, are, am I correct? The right now, if the reuse was never used, it's going to go to that, that big pond that you just.
That's correct.
Referred to? And is that pond, if that happens, is somehow that pond inadequate to meet our requirements?
The, the pond itself, I'm going to say should be sized adequately to meet the requirements. It's, the, the actual numbers have not been ran through recently with the latest bathymetry to see if it provides 60% TSTP and 90% TSS. From past experience, it's going to.
Go ahead. Let's go into what? Think I lost you, can you guys hear me? Hello?
He can get to us.
It's coming back. It's coming back now, the internet's back, it says.
Groundwater reuse system wasn't done first, is it just something about how you had it, had it out or something like that?
We have a, we have a plan for how we build out the city and what's links, and like this, the stars really got aligned perfectly. I would say that we're really lucky that they aligned on where they're at, that we're, we're currently planning on building these projects. Within a couple of years of themselves, and I think the other thing I'd highlight there is that, you know. We could have went around where we would try to get permits for each one of these projects. And if we would do the best we could, but it wouldn't add up to a. So the whole reason that we. Of the board and us to do this a couple of months ago is because we, we care about the water quality of our lakes and.
Anything that we could do on an individual site, so the ask is, I, I appreciate the timing on there and if we had a. 10 year plan of all the streets we're going to want to do and everything was, was perfect and nothing ever changed, maybe we could design around that, but. It didn't happen that way.
Thank you. Can you hear us, Manager Cook?
Yes, I can, can you hear me?
Yes, we sure can.
Yeah, great.
Okay, so we're just waiting for Manager Ziegler to come back, small bathroom break, any other questions from the rest of us?
President.
Yes.
So is, is this in the budget, in the city budget, everything that's been described here already? It's carved in stone, so to speak?
Yes, sir.
Okay, next city council doesn't change their mind and pull back?
Well, I mean, I mean, this project, the 2401, the neighborhood, that's already been approved at council, so that's going. Civic Campus project, we're taking the final construction contracts to council a week from Monday. It's, it's going, the Market Boulevard project, we're at feasibility stage. So there's a process that we have to go to and get some votes from the council and support. There's zero indication that it would ever not move ahead, there's lots of things tied to the Market Boulevard project. Stormwater is frankly, one of the least concerns of the city council for all of that, but we're doing our best to like say this is an awesome thing. So technically, we can't say Market Boulevard is a for sure thing, but it's 99.5% for sure. Uh, there's one other aspect about the reuse project that I think is also exciting. We want to look at it as a resiliency project. In. We've had two incidents of like greater, like 200 or 500 year floods. One in 2014 and one back in like oh six or something where that portion of Market Boulevard, right by that big pond. that portion of Market Boulevard, right by that big pond, over tops and floods. The water reuse system is also being designed, not just to suck water out of it, to irrigate all those fields, but to be a smart pond, to tie to the weather. A big storm's coming, let's pump it down. Let's provide capacity for water so that we can mitigate the flooding. That is a huge thing. We submitted for a grant from the MPCA to hopefully fund that portion of
Very cool thing.
So it's, yeah, we're super excited about it.
It's a very cool thing. It's very cool.
Madam President?
Yes.
One other thing. So how much groundwater are you going to save pumping out to for irrigating the fields and stuff? Have you talked, have you thought about that metric?
Uh, maybe these guys know, but what we did with the design, because we needed to prove how much water we're using, right? I mean, we're not going to just say we're going to use X amount of water. We got a show that we have. So we went back to our records because our current irrigation supply for all of those fields is right on the north side of the Civic Campus there, and it's metered. And we've been metering it for many, many, many years. So we went back and we we pulled the data of how much water we will save. I just don't know what it is off the top of my head. And it might be too deep of a number to to without looking it up.
But you're saving gallons coming out of
Oh, 100%. We would not use potable water to irrigate those fields, which is a material amount of water. Unless for whatever reason, the pond, the pump stopped working or whatever, then we can throw the switch. And then we could, we got to make sure our grass gets irrigated for the fields, right? So we have the backup plan, but we don't plan to ever use it.
That just seemed like another benefit.
Oh, for sure.
Motion in a second.
Yes, we have a motion in a second. Uh, let's vote on Yes.
Madam Chair. I I do have a follow up here because I'm I'm still kind of confused. Are we approving a variance having to do with more than those projects? I mean, is this variance to cover these, that the Market Boulevard, the whatever other one you call, you mentioned? I mean, I just, I I'm sorry, maybe I'm just too dense. But again, I I don't get the delay issue. What what is the delay issue? And why do we have to, why is it even before us? If the pond can meet, otherwise meet, you know, our requirements as it is? And I don't think we should be dealing with an issue we don't have to deal with. And I don't want to be pre approving something, you know, that we haven't seen. So I I just try to understand the variance, the scope of the variance.
President Patterson, managers. So the timing variance is they if, to go back to your original question, manager, but if they never built the reuse system, what would happen? Well, there would be two things that would have to happen. First, they would have to go back and use the bathymetry, the existing pond, and demonstrate that it could meet the water quality standards, the TP and TSS report. But the second part and the part that that they would not be compliant with at this point is they, yes, we would go to a restricted site and say maximum extent practicable, but that would mean they would have to do something. And as it stands right now, actually, that's a good point, they get rain guards. No, no, they're not infiltrating. They're not infiltrating. So as it stands right now, they are getting zero abstraction until this reuse system goes online. But that is the variance for the timing of it.
So is the the, they're not getting the abstraction, so they don't meet our rule?
At this time, until the reuse system is online.
Right.
And abstraction is either going to be reuse. Well, so if they never build the reuse system, how do they get their abstraction? How do they meet that requirement?
President Patterson, managers, then we go to the call it the nickel and dime, the last 20% where you start looking at canopy coverage over the streets. So you get leaf interception. Uh, you'd look at tree trenches, evaluate the neighborhood a little bit more and see if there is some area where you could get some infiltration. And then come back with, here was the maximum amount they were able to get. Like even a ton of an inch, it might be.
Different variants.
But am I correct then, whatever they can't abstract, they have to deal with, right? So it's either got to go into a stormwater plan somewhere. Is that right?
That is correct.
And and right now, that would be in that pond that we're talking about?
That is correct.
And 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 so the question, do we know, does that pond have the capacity right now? Or would that might be one of the things they would, the city would have to do is expand the pond or find out another way to meet that, to be able to handle that water? It can't be abstracted.
If they did not build the reuse system, they would have to demonstrate that the pond can do that. And if the pond did not, then they would have to find another way to make up for any deficient water qualities.
Okay. So can we, so let me ask the the way that the variance, I guess, is being crafted. And I don't know. So my point is, it's the language that we have in the report. Make sure that if that reuse system isn't built, that the city is under an obligation to figure out how to comply with either the abstraction and or the, you know, the filtration, the other standards. Is is that built into this variance requirement?
President Patterson, managers, and please feel free to interject if I'm wrong. We have had the conversation with the city and they know that it is the case. We are going to have to have a may or an agreement with the city that says that. So the agreement with the city will be where that language is added.
Do we need to add this into the uh, motion and permit request? Yes. Mr. Smith.
Madam President, I just, I think there's several threads here to just to be clear about. One is, what happens if the reuse system isn't built?
Right.
The answer is, they don't have a permit. Because this permit is based on that reuse system being built to treat. It's just we're approving a variance and when it gets built, 12 to 18 months later. But if if they can't build the reuse system, they're back to score on coming back. They will have done the Chanview improvements, but we'll have to come up with a way to meet our rules somehow. So that probably is good motivation for uh, so I think the current permit report and variance analysis builds in the idea that it is a condition of this permit that the reuse system gets built.
Okay.
That
Yeah, Madam Chair, I mean, that was my, that's what's very important, that built into this variance and or the permit is that the reuse has to be built within a some type of a timeframe. And I mean, it can't be sometime this century. So do we have that covered?
Mr. Smith, you had one other thing you wanted to add?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, so I think then the question is, is there a timeframe for the condition of the variance, that it must be built within 18 months? Or what are we saying?
Managers, right now, what we're saying is it would be within the way we've laid out the variance is we've talked about it being implemented by early 2026. So that's where I would say implementation online by early 2026.
Is that okay, Mr. Smith? You can put early in there.
Means the first quarter or?
Yeah.
Madam President, um, managers. The phase two of the Civic Campus project is where the the hearty meat of the reuse system gets put into play.
Right.
That's done, complete, or ready by July of 26. So if you just say by like 21, 1 of 27, or give us the middle of the summer of 27, that gives a little bit of, little bit of leeway. I mean, 18 months is way too soon, even though we're close there, but
What, June 30th? June 30th.
27.
Of 27. Yes, we would be acceptable.
Is that acceptable or not? You tell me.
That's two and a half years.
Okay, so you don't think that's acceptable? You'd like to see what?
The the permit report said 12 to 18 months. That's what I was
And that's, so you're saying like March 31st of 2026?
June?
No, I was thinking early, meaning before the midpoint.
Okay.
So that's early to me, not January 1.
The first quote.
I understand that the concern with the timing of the construction of the Civic Campus, which is information that's evolving, right? So from my perspective, if this reuse system is online and operational for the operating season in 2027, that'd be perfect. Right? That 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 would be like the latest I would go. It'd be nice to make sure it's up and functioning that fall of 2026.
Okay.
So that it's there and ready to go in 27 and we're not struggling with
Substantially negotiating.
End of growing season 2026.
Does that sound reasonable? Okay.
We are reasonable people.
Sound like we have a deal.
October 10, 15, because that's the first
Okay.
26.
26.
Okay. I believe we do have a motion on the board.
The other part of it, from a legal perspective though, is the indemnification of
Right.
That was in your motion.
That was in your motion.
So, and then, and the city also said they would be informing the landowners.
Correct.
Right, right, right.
I would like to have that in the language also, just so that's clear.
So you approve the changes in your motion?
Yes.
To inform the landowners.
Yes, okay.
Oh, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Well, I must have been cut out because of the internet, so I didn't hear any motion. So could somebody please summarize the motion on the floor? I apologize, but I didn't hear any of that.
So the motion was to approve the variance, uh, variance requests that we have in front of us. With the condition that all of the engineering recommendations are included, including the indemnification of the watershed district on the two properties where the low floor for separation is not meeting our rules. And then we added the timing for the irrigation system. What was the date again?
10, 15, 26. And stipulation that they contact the adjoining property owners.
Right.
Okay, so hopefully we'll get that correct and
I seconded it. I accept all of them.
I'm sorry, did somebody say my name?
Did you get all that?
I got all that, yeah, thank you very much.
Are we ready to vote? Yes, let's vote. Mr. Smith?
On the variance, manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duvel.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
Yes.
Manager Ziegler. Yes. President Patterson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Leaves the permit.
Okay. Need a motion on the permit.
I'll make a motion to approve the permit with the engineering uh, report recommendations.
For permit? 2024
Permit, uh, 2024 dash 013.
And I need a second.
Second.
Thank you. Andrew Crafton.
Manager, pen and chair.
Yes.
Again, could, uh, friendly amendment to add the second resolution set forth in the report, which gives the administrator the ability to sign or issue the permit upon satisfaction of the conditions.
Are you okay with that amendment?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I think we have it. We have it. Let's vote.
Permit manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duvel.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
Yes.
Manager Ziegler.
Yes.
President Patterson.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you very much for coming. Sorry, we took such a long, roundabout way of getting there.
Well worth it.
All right, we're on to discussion items. Manager Jeffrey, or Administrator Jeffrey. Thank you, guys.
I did speak with, oh yeah, probably not hearing me. Uh, I did speak with Joe Pavelka, who's the Assistant Director of La Sard Sam's Outdoor Heritage Council. Um, I also met with two other members of La Sard Sam's as well as the DNR representative that is part of that program. In that meeting, they felt that we could done? We could apply for funding through La Sard Sam still for the Spring Road property. They didn't give any indication of of how it would score, but they said that that because we don't have fee title to the land yet, that we could do that. Now, any expenses that we've already put forward would not be recuperable through them. That funding would not uh, come available until July of next year. Uh, the application is due on the 24th. I've begun working on it. And we'll continue to do so and get that in. That's really it. I just wanted to let the managers know that that opportunity is available now. Uh, and it fits in with the structure of the contract for deed that we have.
Thank you. Okay, we have just a few items here.
No, Madam President, no, Madam President.
Manager Cook.
You know, I I don't think that inherently Administrator Jeffrey has the authority to do an application like that. I think we should be voting on that. Also, I think that this this issue would be appropriate for discussion between our respective legal counsel. As this could lead to a settlement of at least some of the claims in the litigation. So I am certainly not opposed to trying to find money uh, from the state, uh, which it's been my objection trying to have our taxpayers pay for this. So I think we should be adopting a motion because generally, that's a requirement uh, to make an application that they want to know that it's approved. So I would move that uh, we authorize Mr. Jeffrey to put together a application and submit it to La Sard's, uh, whatever it's called, for funding payments on the acquisition.
Do I have a second for the motion?
A second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
Andrew Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duvel.
Yes.
Andrew Cook.
Well, yes, but with the caveat that none of this is to be construed as a waiver of any of my rights or claims under the current litigation.
Manager Ziegler.
Yes.
President Peters.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Madam President?
Yes.
The engineer and I are conferring about what we would consider an item of unfinished business concerning the enclave permit. You recall that you discussed and denied the variance?
Yes.
We're concerned about the timeframe of the the application was complete on March 18th. And um, either want to extend the review period or you could deny the permit outright now. You have the choice to do either of those, but I think if you left it back with the applicant to do some more work and come back to us, maybe deferring, extending the review period is the most appropriate action.
So do we have a motion to extend the review period?
I'm going to extend the review period.
Yes.
One second.
Okay, shall we vote?
On extending review period for the enclave permit, manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duvel.
Yes.
Manager Cook.
Yes. Yes.
Andrew Ziegler?
Yes.
President Patterson.
Yes.
I, the motion carries five to zero.
All right, we're to the section where we have member reports, but we're also at ten thirty. And I'm very respectful of people's times, I need to be on a job site at five thirty AM tomorrow morning. I'm just asking, uh, can we either defer these until the next meeting or if they're short?
Do we need the legal counsel report regardless?
Legal counsel report.
No, okay.
Yes, Manager Cook.
Well, I move that we uh defer these items to the next meeting and that we adjourn.
A second. All right, thank you so very much. How about a vote?
Manager Crafton.
Yes.
Manager Duvel.
Yes.
Andrew Cook.
Yes.
Ziegler.
Yes.
President Patterson.
Yes.
Is five zero.
Thank you all very much.